All right, we'll go ahead and start. Good evening, everybody. We're going ahead and start tonight's meeting. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Esmondola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, real quick, this meeting is, excuse me, I'll back up. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued executive order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the GoToWebinar application for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the GoToWebinar panel. That is on the right side of your screen. On mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the questions screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions. Please be timely with your questions. Once the public hearing is closed, the item has been, and the item has been discussed by council and voted upon, no more comments will be accepted for that item. We also have five seats here for the public, and we have up to 10 seats in the Sutter Room for the public. They can watch via monitor and ask questions as well. And right now, we will move on to invocation by Councilmember Shaw, if he doesn't mind, and Mr. Burke, if you wouldn't mind leading in the flag salute. When he's done, all you gotta do is say salute pledge. All right. Please stand.
All right, please stand with me. Before we pray tonight, I'm just gonna share something that my pastor shared this past Sunday. And the series that we've been talking about going through is called, whoops, it's called "Unstoppable." And it's talking about the church and the disciples. And basically, there was about five areas. They had unstoppable focus, unstoppable wow, unstoppable unity, unstoppable compassion, unstoppable commitment, and unstoppable growth. And that's what empowered the early church. Let's pray. Father, I just thank you for this time that we can come together and do the business of the city and do your business as well, Father. Father, I just pray that you would just give us all of those unstoppables as we have the commitment, the unity, the compassion, the wow, to make this city what you have envisioned it from the beginning of time. We pray for clarity of vision and purpose, and give us incredible understanding. And we just thank you now and ask that in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to city attorney's report on closed session items. Sir, do you have a report on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. Any requests to modify the agenda? Nothing? All right. So we go on to number one, the Uba Sutter Homeless Consortium Executive Director introduction and presentation by Mr. Johnny Burke. And for those of you who may be speaking, we have this podium right here. Typically, we go here, but we're gonna go right there, Johnny.
Are we switching it up?
Right here.
No, you're talking to yourself.
Oh, you, okay. Never mind. I was told we're using that one. He's the public, isn't he?
Yeah, Chris is on the other end.
Oh, okay. Go for it.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, you can hear me. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and share. Just wanted to take a couple moments just to introduce myself to you, if we haven't met before. And I know some of us are familiar from Sutter-Uba Consortium meetings already, but I haven't met Vice Mayor Boomgarden or Councilmember Shaw until tonight. So hello, my name is Johnny Burke. One of my business cards should have been on your desk. If it got taken away, then I blame Manny, but I'll get you another one. And just let me know, and we'll get that squared away. But I've been about two months on the job right now, working for the consortium, and very excited to be working with all of our partners in the area, including Uba City. It's just been, it's a great time. I look up and down the state of California and a variety of different areas. They're really struggling to deal with homeless. And of course, we have a homeless issue here. We can see it as well. But one nice thing about the Uba Sutter area is that we don't have an increase in homeless last two years, where California has seen anywhere between 11% and 30% increases across the board. And that's due in part for all the different agencies that are working together on this, like Uba City and all the other partner agencies that work with the consortium. So it's exciting to come into a position where there's already a lot of amazing work being done and more continued work being done. I'm very excited about a lot of the different projects that are in the works. I wanted to personally thank the council for the money that the council affords to the consortium through the Community Development Block grant. That $100,000 goes to a variety of different sources that you probably know, Bridges to Housing, Central Valley, Homeless Veterans, Hands of Hope, REST, Salvation Army. And the largest chunk goes to Better Way. And I wanted to share a story with you, not a story of something from the consortium, but I was speaking today with Emelda, who runs Better Way. And I just wanted to know some numbers on how Better Way's been doing, because you've been supporting that. And they've gotten support through the consortium and obviously through Sutter County and a variety of grant sources. And in the, just a little less than a year that they've been open, they've successfully housed 36 individuals that have gone through their program and are now in permanent housing. And that's a big deal. It's an exciting thing. Some of the funds that are being used from that Community Development Block grant have gone towards different salaries there, the shelter monitors, the housing navigator, their case management services. And those folks, their whole priority is to deescalate situations on the, there, to wash the bedding, to manage onsite services. But that housing navigator part is really critical. That person is really in charge of getting folks to go from temporary emergency shelter and into permanent housing. And they've been doing a really good job of that. And she shared with me a story today that you don't see so much in numbers, but of the 36 individuals that they've housed over the last year, three of those folks have been rehoused and did not reenter homelessness because of their, their post caseworker care, I guess you could say. Folks stay in touch with them. And three different individuals, two in their 70s, one who was 82 years old, in their new housing they got, were gonna lose housing for no fault of their own. And she shared with me that the 82-year-old was about to lose his housing because the house that he was in was being sold. But he reached out to Better Way. Their housing navigator was able to find him a place, so he didn't reenter homelessness. So that's just really a great example of, of working together as a team to help people out. And that's thanks in part to the funds that you've allotted to that. So I wanted to thank you for that. I wanted to share a couple things that the Sutter-Uba Homeless Consortium is in the process of doing. Right now, on Monday, we issued requests for proposals for almost $1.9 million in funds that'll be given out over the next two months to a variety of different agencies. And so that'll be closing in just a couple weeks. They'll be submitting those in, and final decisions will be made, and that money will be going out. So there's a lot of money that's gonna be coming into a lot of different agencies with some new projects. There's four different funding sources. And if you're interested in any of these things, you can certainly ask any questions at the end. I'd love to answer any questions you might have. Wanted to let you know upcoming that there's more funding coming. That's not the end of what's coming. I just got notification today that one of the funding sources that we're gonna be handing out, almost $790,000. The second round is coming out. It's called H-HAP. And today was announced that they're affording us $401,000 additional that we'll be able to, and we just found that out today. So surprise, Grace said that. You probably got the email, too. We also have another large grant coming down called ESG CV II. ESG is Emergency Solutions Grant, CV is for COVID, and this is the second round. This has the potential to be quite a bit of money. We got a lot the first round from that went out to this area, a little over $600,000. And now the second round has the potential to be up to two to three times that. So we're gonna see what they're gonna afford our area. So there's a lot of great things happening and a lot of great agencies and programs that are being supported right now. And so I just want to let you know about that. I also wanted to invite you possibly to something. Isn't that weird when someone says, "I wanna possibly invite you to something"? Like, I'm gonna give you an invitation, but I might take it back, and I'll explain why. In January, we're gonna be doing our annual PIT count. PIT stands for Point-in-Time Count. We do this every year. On odd number of years, we do a sheltered and unsheltered count. So that means we go out and try and count every single person who might be experiencing homelessness at the time. In 2019, in Sutter and Uba Counties, we had 721 individuals who fell into that classification and were experiencing homelessness. In even number of years, we do a sheltered count. So just recently, we got a count from all the different shelters, and that number was 202. So there's quite a big difference there. You've got 500-plus people that are out and about. And so we're in the odd number of years. So 2021, we have another sheltered and unsheltered coming up. And so I would like to invite each and every one of you council members to join us that day, if we get to do it, because COVID might put a break on that. We're still waiting to hear from HUD if we will be able to do that. But if we're able to do that, I would invite you to come out, because it's a great opportunity to go out. And there's a questionnaire you get to fill out, and just get a little bit of information on the folks, hear a little bit of their stories, and see some things firsthand. It's a great opportunity. I'm sure we can get you a free breakfast and lunch out of it. So if that's enticing at all, please let me know, and we'll do, yeah, just for Manny? Okay. Sounds good, Vice Mayor. So I just wanted to let you know about that. You do have one of my business cards on your desk there. Also, I want to let you know that we are hiring another position. We are hiring a data management, a data assistant position. It's a part-time position, and that's on our website. So if you know anybody looking for a position, we're looking for the finest quality we can. And so if you know anybody, please push them our way. And just wanted to open up, if anyone had any questions, I would certainly love to entertain those if there's any questions right now.
Through the mayor, thanks for being here tonight. It's good to finally put a name with a face, and it sounds like there's a lot of good things going on. One question I have is with the point-in-time count, do those numbers in any way affect your ability to secure funds from grants or other sources? So if you aren't able to do that, is that gonna be a challenge?
Well, it won't. Yes and no. Those numbers absolutely are critical for HUD to see what we have and for HCC to make decisions. Matter of fact, the information that, for the H-HAP second round that just came out today, they told us that they base those numbers, those allocations, on our point-in-time counts from 2019. So they haven't given us instructions yet. It will not hurt us, because if HUD tells us we cannot do it, and that they're not permitting it because of COVID restrictions, then we'll be stuck with our numbers from 2019, and we'll probably do just another sheltered count. And they'll probably extrapolate from those numbers based on previous numbers. So it won't be something that we have direct control. We have to take HUD's, their guidance and what they tell us that we can and cannot do. So it won't hurt us if we can't. It just might not help us.
Thanks.
So you coming, Vice Mayor? Is that, is that a yes, then?
I'll come for lunch.
Okay. Sounds good.
What was the date again?
It's usually the last week of January. In 2019, it was like January 29th. So we don't, we don't have an exact date, because HUD's being very, very careful not to, and people keep asking at the meetings, and HUD's last official response is, "We don't have an official response, and please stop asking." So we are waiting on them now at this point.
All right. Through the mayor, I just want to thank you, Johnny, for being here today. And your presentation was awesome. You covered it really well. And I'm impressed and happy that you are part of our team. On the consortium, you have, in the last two months, done more work, I think, than our entire board has been able to do in over a year. So thank you so much. And I encourage you all to get on the PIT team, so you can see how that works. And, and you'll, and get to know Johnny, and perhaps have a meeting with him one-on-one if you haven't met with him, and ask some of those questions, because some of those projects, we just opened up the Life Building. Do you want to describe a little bit about that on the Life Building?
Sure, absolutely. If you've never been to the Life Building, it's located over in Marysville at 131 F Street. For the last two years, it's been the coordinated entry spot for Uba County, just like Hands of Hope is the coordinated entry spot for Sutter County. And for the front half of the building, they've been doing coordinated entry for the last two years, where someone off the street would come there, that would be their first point of entry. That's why we call it coordinated entry, where they would meet with a caseworker, find out some options for housing, find out how to get options for healthcare, meet with a counselor, possibly job training, a whole spectrum of different services have been offered there. And they've been working on rehabbing the back part of the building to make it into a shelter. And it is, it is complete. On Monday, they got their final inspection, their certificate of occupancy. And there is 25 total beds there, 12 male, 12 female upstairs, and one large ADA room with an accompanying ADA bathroom downstairs. There's full showers there and laundry. This is our first 24-hour shelter in the area. So if someone should need shelter at 2:00 AM in the morning, they can knock on the door. And if a bed is available, they will be able to go right into a bed. And so that's a first in our area. And so that should be opening in a matter of hours to bring folks in. But they've got, they've got everything lined up.
Johnny, what do they expect the capacity to be, not the capacity, but the occupancy to be? Is it gonna be immediately filled up?
As of last week, they had six males and six females on the waiting list, and that was probably seven to 10 days ago. So they expect it to fill up quickly. What's nice about that building is that there is a overflow capacity downstairs. And so if somebody comes in in the middle of the night, and all 24 beds upstairs are taken, they still can provide an emergency cot for someone, and then the next morning regroup to see if that person, "Okay, are you Sutter County? Maybe we can get you into Better Way. Are you Uba County? Maybe 14-4 to spot for you. Maybe the depot's a spot for you. Maybe we need to get right into wrapping your housing." So there's a variety of different options. But as long as they have overflow beds, they should be able to get people in.
Are we still doing outreach to the folks who are homeless, you know, in the river bottoms, for example, so they are aware that this is available to them?
Yes. And the, there's a brand-new team called the HART Team, and HART stands for Homeless Engagement and Resolution Team. And this team is for outreach specifically. It's headed up by April Tate with Behavioral Health. And this, this group is designed to go out there and have behavioral health representatives, as well as street nurse, law enforcement to go out, and to meet people out in the field, to see if they can offer assistances, to encourage them to come into the coordinated entry sites, and also to advertise the new shelter as well. The HART Team hasn't got to mobilize and go out in the field just yet. As a team, that should be happening, really, within the week. I'm sure you're aware, there's a pandemic going on right now, and it's kind of holding things up a little bit. And so that's kind of held them up a little bit. But the street nurse outreach team is still going out. As a matter of fact, Cynthia Cooper from Adventist is gonna be going out tomorrow morning and gonna be hitting the streets. And I went out with her about a month ago, along with one of the officers from Sutter County Sheriff's. And every single person we talked to, she talked to them, encouraged them to come, and asked them where they're at, asked them if they thought about getting to housing. And so on that particular day, we were looking for a specific individual who had been approved for Better Way. We wanted to find him and let him know we got a spot for him. We were able to find him and eventually get him in there. So that was, that was good.
Great. Thank you very much.
Awesome. And you have my cards. Please do contact me if you have any questions. I'd love for, when you, when any of you council members think, if you have a question about homelessness, whether it's a statistic, or an idea, or a question about collaboration, I'd love for you to think of my name, send me a text, call, whatever the case may be, so I can answer that for you, so you don't have to run around trying to find an answer. Hopefully, make it as easy as possible, so we can continue our collaborative effort. I really appreciate the time.
We appreciate your time, too. Thank you very much. It was very informative. That's good. All right. Move on to number two. Discussion and any action measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, last week, the state, the California Department of Public Health issued a new statewide public health order on August 28th that went into effect on August 31st. And so it establishes an updated framework for four county risk levels. And each county has been assigned a tier. And so to progress to the next tier, counties must have been, must have been in the current tier for a minimum of three weeks, and meet both criteria for the next tier for the two prior consecutive weeks. And a county must revert to a more restricted tier if a county's case rate or positive test rate has been within that more restricted tiers range for the two prior consecutive weeks. So it sounds, sounds complicated, but it's, it's not that complicated. Basically, you have to be in the current tier for at least three weeks, of which to progress to the next one, you have to meet that next tier's criteria for two weeks. So with that said, the state is calling this the blueprint for a safer economy. And currently, right now, Sutter County is in this widespread county risk level. And so in terms of new cases, more than seven daily new cases per 100,000, with positive tests more than 8%. To graduate up to the substantial risk level, it's four to seven daily new cases with a 5% to 8% positive test rate. Moderate is 1% to 3.9 daily new cases with a 2% to 4.9% positive test rate. And minimal is less than one daily new case per 100,000, and then less than 2% positive test rate. And so what's, what's important to see is when you look at the different sectors, and what it means for each of those sectors. So for instance, hair salons and barber shops, there's been a lot of discussion related to that sector. Under the widespread tier, just recently, the state said that they could open indoors with modifications. You can see, as you, as you graduate up through the tiers, that stays the same, open indoors with modifications. Versus if you look at retail, under widespread tier one, open indoors with modifications with a max 25% capacity. As you go to tier two, the substantial, it would be a max 50% capacity. And then three and four are with modifications. Going to the next one, shopping centers, again, we're under the widespread. So open indoors with modifications, max 25% capacity, closed common areas, closed food courts. Then it graduates to 50%. And then, once you get to moderate, closed common areas, reduced capacity at food courts. And then with the minimal, reduced capacity at food courts. Personal care services, across the board, outdoor only with modifications for widespread. And then it goes to open indoors with modifications. The one that we get a lot of questions about in terms of places of worship, we talked about this earlier. So widespread, currently, they have it as outdoor only with modifications. As you move to substantial, it's maximum 25% capacity or 100 people, whichever's fewer. You graduate up to moderate, it's max 50% capacity or 200 people, whichever's fewer. And then even under the minimal tier, it's still the capacity at 50%. I'm gonna move on to restaurants, because there have been a lot of questions related to restaurants. So underwrite the widespread, it's outdoor only with modifications. As we graduate to substantial, it would be open indoors with modifications. Again, the limitation of max 25% or 100 people, whichever's fewer. Moderate would be max 50% or 200 people, whichever's fewer. And then minimal is max 50%. So you can see that as you graduate through these risk levels, there's still going to be significant restrictions on the sectors. And, you know, the, the impacts, as we, we evaluate the financial impacts of this on the city, we're currently in widespread. You have to be within each tier for a minimum of three weeks, have to meet the criteria for the next tier for a minimum of two weeks. This could be a very long process for Sutter County. So to look at Sutter County right now, currently, 15 new COVID-19 positive cases per 100,000, and our positivity rate is 8.9%. So before I move on to city operations, any questions related to this new blueprint for a safer economy? Also, if you go to the county's website, they are updating the dashboard. And so there's, you know, some information on there. But as the state has moved to this new metric, really, the importance is the new COVID cases per 100,000, and then the positivity rate. All right, with that, I'm gonna do a slide on city operations, and then ask the Community Services Director, Brad McIntyre, to come up to give an update on community services. So City Hall continues to remain open. Animal Services is open Tuesday through Saturday from 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. The Police Department Lobby continues to be closed, and then all other facilities continue to remain closed to the public. And with that, I will ask Mr. McIntyre to come up, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Just as far as, everything is pretty much status quo, except we do have a change at Gauchea Aquatic Park. As of this coming Monday, we are, because of a lack of staffing, lack of participation, we're going to suspend our recreation programs at Gauchea Aquatic Park into the near future. I mean, really, it just comes down to the five or six employees that we've been reduced down to as far as part-time, they're now gonna go on to college and/or high school. So that's, that's a decision we've kind of just need to make. And I'd start with that. Do you have any questions for me on that? Okay. The Youth Commission, through Kelsey Myers, who is our part-time employee for, represents our Youth Commission, she put them together with Councilmember Esmondola. And there is going to be a public outreach, I think. Councilmember Esmondola will be able to provide some more information as it relates to a partnership with Dr. Lou in the Health Department, and creating a education series as it relates to wearing face masks and some concept called the bubble, if you will. But again, I'm sure that's gonna come up a little bit later in the council reports. So with that, I'll gladly entertain any questions.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Or in the Sutter Room? Public first. Public? Sutter Room? Computer?
None that we've received so far.
All right, can we get confirmation from Spencer about, it looks like he's, Spencer, wave at me if there's nothing.
Mayor, I could, I was just over there. So currently, there is nobody in the Sutter Room?
All right, thank you very much.
And so I'll, I'll be manning that here in a little bit. And so if the public enters, then I'll chime in. But other than that, if you don't hear from the Sutter Room, you'll notice.
Appreciate it. Thanks. All right, so we'll go on to item number three, Appearance of Interested Citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chamber and the Sutter Room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided, if you would like one. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the Sutter Room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any public comment? No. Okay. We'll move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these? Say none? And any, no computer comments?
None so far.
All right, here we go again. With that in mind, we have consent items for number four, five, and six this meeting, and we can entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to approve the consent calendar on items four, five, and six.
All right.
Second.
I'll go with you, Grace. She seconded that one first, I guess. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions, none. All right. Thank you very much on that. Moving on to business items. Number seven, Declaration of Surplus, Surplus Land and Exempt Surplus Land. Welcome back.
Thank you very much. So, a few months ago, the city council asked staff to establish a list of surplus properties within the city. And so we, we have prepared a list. The properties before you tonight does not encompass all of those surplus properties. There are additional surplus properties within the city, some that are owned by this accessory agency, another one called the Stonegate property that needs some additional work in terms of dissolving a CSD. And we also own some homes that were purchased through the Homes to Families Program, in which we have, that's administered through the Regional Housing Authority, and there are tenants currently in those homes. I have asked the Regional Housing Authority to let me know as those tenants leave, because that would be another opportunity for council to decide or consider whether or not to continue ownership of those properties. So with that said, the Surplus Land Act governs the disposition of land owned by the city that is determined to be no longer necessary for the city's use. So in 2019, Governor Newsom signed into law AB 1486. AB 1486 significantly modifies how the city goes about not disposing of surplus land. It was intended to address California's shortage of affordable housing. But like I said, it impacts existing practices, adds new reporting requirements, and subjects agencies to penalties for noncompliance, with those penalty provisions going into effect January 1st of next year. This is one of those things that, I mean, I've worked for government for a long time. And when I look at this and see the amount of additional work associated with this, it's, it's significant. significant, and I understand why this was brought forward. But as I go through these properties, some of these, it's going to be pretty burdensome to address this. So with that said, prior to any sale or lease of property, the city must formally declare land as either surplus land or exempt surplus land pursuant to a resolution which adopts findings. So the only item before you tonight is to declare the properties that I'm going to discuss as either surplus land or exempt surplus land. So the definition of exempt surplus land includes properties that are less than 5,000 square feet in area, land that a local agency exchanges for another property necessary for the agency's use, land transferred to another local state or federal agency, or land that is subject to recorded covenants that would make housing a prohibited use. With that 5,000 square foot restriction, that's pretty small, so there aren't a lot of properties that would be qualified as exempt. So if land has been declared as exempt, the city need not comply with the procedural So now getting into the procedural requirements. The city will need to issue a notice of availability to a housing sponsor for affordable housing development, school district if land is suitable for school facilities, if we had a separate Parks and Rec district, we would need to issue it to them as well, and the State Resources Agency. Any responding entity must notify the city of its interest in purchasing or leasing the land within 60 days following the receipt of the notice of availability. If price and terms cannot be agreed upon between the city and responding entity within 90 days, the city may then go forward to sell or lease the surplus land to a third party. The city will still have to provide HCD, a description of the notice of availability sent, and negotiations conducted with any responding entity. So we're taking these surplus properties, we will issue a notice of availability to these housing sponsors and these other agencies. I went on HCD's website, and currently, there are three registered housing sponsors statewide. And then there's about 170 developers that are registered that have requested NOAs statewide. And then there's one developer out of Chico that's specifically listed for Sutter County for receipt of notices of availability. So again, the NOAs would go out, they'd have 60 days to respond. If somebody does respond that they're interested, there's the 90 days to try to negotiate a contract. If at the end of that 90 days, we can't come to terms, then the city could go to a third party to negotiate a contract. So again, if no housing sponsors respond to the NOA, or if termination, negotiation terminate, and the land is later sold or leased to a market rated developer who builds more than 10 residential units, 15% must be sold or rented at an affordable cost or rent to lower income individuals. As you'll see from the surplus properties that I'm going to be discussing tonight, I don't think any of them would meet that 10-unit threshold, so I do not believe that they would be subject to this. But this is something to keep in mind, because it would be a requirement if we were to have such a large piece of property. Number five, HCD must review the process description and submit written findings within 30 days as to whether any process violations have occurred. So if HCD does not respond within 30-day time period, the city would not be subject to any penalties. But if it were to determine that we had violated the procedure, then we could receive penalties between 30 and 50% of the final sale price of the property. So here's HCD's website, and I just want to point out, so they have a map of notices received as of August 7th, 2020. And then here, they have, if you're a developer interested in purchasing or leasing your surplus local land for affordable housing development, you can submit your interest here. And then they also have view list of developers here. So this is where I went to see all of the developers that have expressed interest, not only statewide, but within Sutter County. So to get into the properties, here's the list of all of the properties that staff is requesting that council deem as exempt surplus land. You can see they're all extremely small in area. And what these are, are former well sites, either through the Hillcrest Water Company, former groundwater wells, or as part of this former fire wells. And we don't utilize a lot of these wells for fire service anymore, because of the amount of damage that they do to the equipment if we try to draw water out of these wells. In regard to those parcels that exceed that 5,000 square foot threshold, we have these parcels as well. Many of these, and I'll go into a little bit more detail related to each one, many of these are also well sites. However, we do have a former fire station four, and then we also have a former storm detention basin up on Clark Avenue. So the next few slides are going to go into a little bit more detail about each property. So number four, up here on Quail Point Drive at Hooper, this is a former well site. Number five, here on Butte House Road, this is one of the, would be exempt locations, also a former well site. Number seven, on Williamsburg Drive, this would be considered surplus land, former well site. Number eight, at the corner of Rayer Ranchero and Jefferson, former well site. And then here at 3059 Jefferson, another former well site. So green would depict what would be considered surplus land, and then yellow is the exempt Up here, this is Clark Avenue, and you have North Ridge, this would be Providence Court. And so parcel two is a former city detention basin, and then parcel one is a recent parcel that the city acquired to be able to merge with parcel two, to have a, to be able to access the city-owned parcel, because we were landlocked based upon that small strip of land. Parcel three is a tiny well site over on Blevin Road, just north of Jamie. And then parcel six, over on Darrow Drive, is a former well site. Parcel 10, it's designated as Highway 99, technically, it's on West Onstop Frontage Road. This is just a tiny sliver piece that's a road that really serves no purpose to the city at this point in time. Parcel 14 is a former well site on Oliver Drive. Parcel 15 is the former Fire Station Four site. Parcel 16 is a small sliver of land that was adjoined to the former Fire Station Four site. And then parcel 17 was a former residential site that we purchased when we were considering expanding the Fire Station Four property. Parcel 18 is a former well site on Dean Drive. Parcel 19 is a former well site on Joseph Street. And then parcel 20, another well site on Crestwell Drive. And then parcel 22, down here on Railroad, again, a well site. And then parcel 11 on George Washington, well site. 12, well site. 13, well site. And then 21, well site. So for the exempt surplus land, you can see these are very tiny parcels. You know, staff's recommendation would be to consider deeding the lands to the adjacent property owners. There's not value, you know, the city continues to be responsible for the maintenance of those properties. We're currently coordinating to disconnect PG&E to these wells, so that we're not longer paying the PG&E costs associated with that. But staff would recommend to deed the lands to the adjacent property owners. So what happens if the adjacent property owners say, "We're not interested, we don't want this"? You know, then we would evaluate to basically hardscape it, so that there's no maintenance associated with it, and get rid of the well, so we don't have that, issue that liability anymore. And then there's one small parcel, again, on Walton Avenue, that technically, it's exempt based upon the size, but because it's located between the former Fire Station Four and that residential property, to go ahead and merge that with those other two surplus lands, so that there's a larger parcel for somebody to be able to develop. In regards to the surplus land, staff would recommend to select a real estate broker to assist staff to manage the offering negotiating, potentially selling the surplus land. Again, the items before you tonight are just to declare them as surplus. We would then issue a notice of availability and solicit proposals from housing sponsors and other interested parties for the purchase lease of the land. And big recommendation, offer the properties as-is. There are some properties on the surplus land side, they're questionable as to whether or not they could be developed as single-family dwellings. They're in areas where sewer's not available. We can't make a guarantee if you could even construct a septic system on the properties. And so, my concern is that we could get individuals buying these properties, thinking that they can build a home, and then they find out that, no, they can't build a home because of the restrictions in terms of the location of the septic and the buildable area. So we would want to sell these as-is, and so also, we're not doing, putting a lot of money into investigating whether or not they are developable. Any proposals received will be negotiated and later brought to the City Council for approval. If no proposals are received following the notice of availability process, then proposals would be acquired from third parties to bring forward to council. With all of that said, timeline. Initially, it was our goal to try to dispose of the surplus land prior to January 1st to avoid the requirement to provide the process that we followed to HCD and have to go through that written findings process. Based upon the timeline that's required, the 60 days, let's say you don't get somebody that's interested. You know, we issue the notice of availability, we provide 60 days for people to respond, nobody responds, we still have to then go out and solicit proposals from third parties, evaluate that, negotiate that. It's not going to be possible to have these properties transferred and sold by January 1st, 2021. And so, based upon that, it's likely that this will extend beyond the January 1st deadline, basically, for implementation of the HCD review. And so, staff's just anticipating that HCD will need to review the process. So in terms of fiscal impact, the city will collect proceeds from the sale of the surplus land. However, there will be costs associated with this, if we move forward with disposing of this. You're going to have appraisals, staff time to prepare the NOAs and manage the process, title and escrow costs, brokerage fees if we have a real estate broker. And so, a process that used to be, we could get proposals, negotiate a contract, bring it to council, and get the proceeds. We are now adding in additional staff resources and additional resources to be able to dispose of these properties. So the recommendation tonight is to provide direction to the staff as to the disposal method for the exempt surplus land properties, and then adopt a resolution declaring the properties as exempt surplus and surplus land, and directing the city manager to follow the procedure set forth in the Surplus Land Act. So future council items would be final disposition of the exempt surplus land, and then final disposition of the surplus land. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No questions from me? Diane, I know tonight, we're just deciding what you just listed out there, but I do have one question on, given, you know, uncertainty of our budget, and it's going to have a fiscal impact on the city if we move forward selling, and we're already beyond the January 1st to make it more convenient. Is there, are we in a hurry to do this? Or would it make more sense to me, if we're going to have to expend some money to get rid of it, it would be nice to clean the slate of some of these things?
Right.
But we don't know where the budget...
One moment.
Just recorded everything I just said. What was I saying?
Are we in a hurry?
Oh, are we in a hurry to get rid of it? Can we wait until we find more about the budget?
We can wait until we find out more about the budget. What has, what originally drove this is we have received requests from interested parties in purchasing some of these surplus land properties. And so, when we, when staff originally brought this to council, council said, "Please establish the list of surplus properties and bring this forward for evaluation." COVID hit, that impacted the timeframe. And so, we're now at a point that, you know, we continue to receive a lot of interest in various properties. And so, you know, we're not in a hurry, and, but recognizing that when we do start, there will be resources associated with it. And there is the potential to get proceeds from this, where we can make money off of these properties, but it will be intensive in terms of time.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'll go ahead and move, before we do a motion, I can...
Through the mayor.
You have more?
Yeah, just one question came to mind, Mr. Mayor, while you were talking. You mentioned, you know, when we originally had these discussions, it was prior to COVID-19. And that's kind of been the suspend-all, everything that we've been, everything's got suspended. So has HCD postponed the January 1? Or are they standing hard and fast? Because I know that there was some talk about, and please help correct me here, but any surplus property could become available for other things if the state deemed necessary. It seems like I heard that somewhere way back on some things. But what is our, what is our double jeopardy with this? If we hang on to the properties and do nothing, do we run the risk of losing control of the city-owned properties? Or we just stuck with this process, period?
As far as I know, and Shannon might be able to chime in here, City Attorney, we're not at risk of losing these properties. I would say, as time goes on, if anything, you might be at risk at more regulations related to the properties, as we saw with, you know, what was implemented 2019 to be effective, portion of it effective now, and additional portion to be effective next year. We're not at risk. The one thing, as we continue to own these properties, we continue to be responsible for maintenance of these properties. So there is a cost associated with that.
All right, thank you.
Through the council. Anytime that you also have property as well, you also have a liability risk if anybody goes out there, gets tripped and hurt, but that's any sort of risk that any sort of property owner would have. But we are concerned about future regulations, because the state has implemented past regulations, and has given every vacation that they intend to implement further regulations with regards to the property.
All right. Very good point. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Sir? Go ahead.
Through the mayor. So, it's not clear to me, so the direction that you're asking for disposal of the method of the exempt surplus, isn't it pretty much outlined in how, in the report?
It is. So it'd just be a matter of if council concurs with that recommendation.
Okay. So the expense to that is unknown, because...
Right. Yeah, we would, if council directs staff to move forward with this, we would need to put together a project to, number one, abandon the wells at the, those well sites. Or, you know, go to the adjacent property owners for the exempt sites and say, "Are you interested in this well? If we transfer property, are you willing to accept all of the property, including the well?" So there'd be some discussions there. But some of the other surplus land sites still have facilities on them that we will need to address. And so, you know, we'd have that as well.
Okay. So in the resolution, it covers all those areas exactly what you presented in the PowerPoint?
The resolution just covers designating the properties as exempt surplus land or surplus land. And makes the findings as to why those are exempt.
So it begins the opportunity to start figuring out which ones, what we're going to do. If we're going to go with the exempt and contact the neighbor, or if we're going, okay.
Yeah, this is just the first step in a long process.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor. My recommendation would be to begin the process, at least of designating the exempts, provide direction to staff as to disposal method for the exempt surplus land. I see no reason why we can't at least begin those discussions at the staff level. I'm assuming you'd come back to a recommendation for us?
Right. Right.
I would second that.
I need to get first and second to proceed with staff's recommendation, which makes sense, but I need to back up to public comment, any public comment here in the room? And I don't see anybody in the Sutter Room, anything on the computer, ma'am?
None.
Okay. So we have a first and second to move forward to staff's recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Mayor, I'm sorry, there was a person raising their hand after you...
All right, ma'am. No, we have to have you, well, is there a microphone even over there?
Yeah.
There is? If we didn't have the microphone, we could have had you do it from there.
I just have a question about the size of the Quail Point that was a well site that they've cleaned up, and now it's just weeds. Is it really large enough to be considered surplus rather than exempt?
It does not meet the threshold to be considered exempt. It's more than 5,000 square feet.
Not much.
It's too large. Now, that's one of the properties that it's questionable as to whether or not it could be developed as a single-family home, based upon it's a corner lot, you know, the size of it, the configuration of it. That's really one that I would be concerned about, somebody buying it, thinking they could build a home. And so that's when we definitely, when we issue the notice of availability, we'd want to be very clear as to what the restrictions would be associated with the property.
And I do have a little question on that, because I know that at least... And I do have a little question on that because I know that at least eight years ago, there was somebody who was doing everything she could to purchase that property and was willing to clean it. And it seems like it, in fact, she moved out of the area because she couldn't. And it seems a little negligent that it's taken this long to get to this point to where it's being disposed of.
There was some contamination on that site as well as some other facilities associated with the well that it, just in terms of the budget to be able to clean that up, we were just recently able to do that.
Yeah, but she was willing to pay that price.
Yeah.
And so it's just a comment. It just, it does not look to be at all in conformity with the other structures in the area.
Right.
And I don't see how a dwelling could be put on it.
Right. That's why we want to be very cautious. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we move on, does anybody else have anything? All right. So we've already passed the motion. Thank you very much, Diana. We want to item number eight, the nuisance.
Mayor. We have to go to vote.
Oh, we did?
No, just motion.
First and second only.
Did he get interrupted before that? Okay.
Sorry. Yeah, we did.
I love it when that happens. So, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now we're done. Thank you. All right. This is so fun. All right. So now we go number eight, nuisance ordinance update.
Okay. So, good evening, mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is in regards to the update of the city's nuisance ordinance. And so, so with us here, just in the background, I want to make sure to let you know that the city attorney Shannon Jaffin, Jaffin Roy Santos, and then also our code enforcement officers, Eric Ball and Lincoln Eden are online in case we get into the specifics that are available to help answer those questions. So tonight, what we have going is that we're asking council to conduct a public hearing and introduce an ordinance replacing UBS City Municipal Code Title 4, Chapter 8, Nuisance Abatement Code and waive the first reading with the purpose to update the city's nuisance ordinance to help streamline processes, address current needs, and provide staff adequate administrative tools to remedy nuisances. And so, before you is a couple, a before and after shot of a blighted home that unfortunately we deal with regularly, just kind of an example. So I have a couple pictures spread out here. Obviously, they're not all this bad, but here's some of the extreme cases. So, a little background, council desires to enhance and promote property maintenance throughout the city. It promotes livability, enhances community appearance, and it raises the social and economic conditions for the community. Complete replace, so what we're proposing tonight is a complete replacement of the existing ordinance. Instead of going through and updating specific items, it's really at a time where in order to match state laws, meet noticing requirements, address problematic nuisances, and meet current definitions and goals, and meet state requirements that was really in the format it was, it was warranted for a complete rehaul. Most of the, many of the items are the same items, but fine tuned. Garbage in the front yard is garbage in the front yard. But with this, it's a new form, a new layout to streamline that for, for staff and for the community reading it. So, a little more background, here's a few common cases that we see around the city. We have blighted property in the front yard, blighted property in the backyard with pools not being maintained. We have a marijuana grow up in the right-hand corner, and then we have overgrown vegetation in the public right-of-way causing conflicts. Some common nuisances from, from our YC 301 reporting system from August 1st to August 1st, 2020. You can see the cases in the table. It's a little hard to read, but abandoned house building, 12 cases. Fence issues, 26. Graffiti, 60. Home business issues, 30 cases. Intersection, line of sight, tree shubs blocking visibility, marijuana cultivation. Property maintenance is a big one there. You see 326 cases. Shopping carts at 126. We'll talk with our next item. Signs, substandard buildings, trees, overgrown dead, tree shrubs encroaching on sidewalk roadways, vehicles on private property, weeds. And this, those YC 301 cases don't include other cases that we typically deal with such as vendor permit compliance, the mobile sidewalk, open air, non-compliant accessory dwellings, unpermitted building issues for the various carports that pop up around town, truck parking, RV parking, vacant property, and weed abatement. What the proposed ordinance does, city staff coordinate to put together an updated nuisance abatement code that addresses longstanding delinquencies and provides clear processes and options to aid the abatement process. It complies with current legal requirements. It provides streamlined clarified processes. It provides for a wide range of enforcement mechanisms. It updates, adds nuisance definitions. And it provides flexibility to staff to initiate code enforcement proactively and reactively as needed based on the severity of the violations. So tonight, it's a starting point with the ordinance and a two-step process that where we introduce the ordinance as is a, as a process through an ordinance amendment that lets the, let the public aware, but it also is an option to make modifications. And so, right now, we have a proposed ordinance and there's definitely opportunity tonight and going forward that if there needs to be a change or if council desires to have a change for thresholds or a different goal for that, this is the meeting to do that. And we could either handle it at the meeting or direct staff to come back with a revised So here's, there's a lot of wordy, a lot of words on these slides, but here's the highlights of what we've, what we've done is substantial modifications and changes. We clarified the violations. So we went through, we made sure there's no ambiguous wording on some, such as the public right-of-way conflicts. We've, we've identified the fees for the infractions, for the misdemeanors, for what is reimbursable cost. We've really spelled out the noticing process and then also the appeal process for the public for each step in the code enforcement process depending on how far it goes. We reviewed and confirmed the definitions to clearly define nuisance types and that they meet current goals. Added requirements for property owners to trim trees, shrubs around streetlights and or street lights, street signs and or streetlights. That's been kind of a longstanding issue that hasn't been in the code regarding private property trees and conflicts with public facilities. Clarified conflicts with prop, with public property, removal of garbage, sporting equipment, landscaping material, and other personal property from the public right-of-way. Tractor trailer parking clearly defined. And then also, a big part of this section is vacant property definitions and requirement for property plans. And so that is, those are the big items that are new to this code versus previous code.
Through the mayor. Hey, Ben, like, um, the property owners trimming the trees around street signs and stuff like that. In the past, we had city employees going out in a truck and trimming if the signs are blocked by a tree, then we've done it. So according to this ordinance here, it's going to be up to them to do it instead of us?
That's the possibility. And so right now, you're absolutely right. If, if it's blocking a public sign or a stop sign, one of, the street division goes out and cleans it, the frustration on city staff side is we're in that private tree continually every year, every six months, it grows back. And so we're having to run out there continually cut it. And it gets a little dicey cutting private property in order for the public. And so with this code, it does put that responsibility onto the property owner for a private tree.
Okay.
For both signs and for streetlights.
So the streetlight that's 20 feet in the air, if their tree covers it, they got to trim it?
Yes. But with that, I'm sure the city, as always, endeavors to work with them to, to work together to get it resolved. You know, the, my next slide is, it's, the goal is voluntary compliance and, you know, it's, it's one thing to trim a branch every once in a while versus trimming it every six months and not having the authority to trim it if they don't want us to trim the tree. And so this gives us, it puts the responsibility onto the property owner where it starts the conversation.
Okay. Thank you, Ben.
I went too far. Okay. So, and please, there's a lot in this presentation, so feel free to answer questions. I'm happy to answer questions as we go through it. So the goal is voluntary compliance. That's the city's goal. It's always our operating procedures is that we really want to work through education and verification and work with the residents to let them know about the issue and then hopefully work towards voluntary compliance. The proposed ordinance provides flexibility for staff to initiate code enforcement proactively with tools in place. So with this, it's not just reactively, but if, say, if there is a priority for mobile vendors or for fruit salesmen on Saturday, there's nothing in this code that prohibits us from doing that. It's just based on resources. Typically, we're in a reactive state on how we have things. But, but with this, it lines out different options for enforcement. It's not just, you're out of compliance, we give you a ticket, and then you walk through the dollar amounts. With code enforcement, it's complicated. It's usually tied to a lot of different issues with the property ownership and responsibilities. And so with this code, it spells out the administrative citation option, special assessment. So if we have to go in and put a special assessment on the property in order to recover costs or to recover those citations, it allows for property liens, public notices on deeds. So if there's a pending action, we could put a notice on the deed. So if a property sells, then the new owners are aware. If there's an authority to clean, and so if there's a health and safety or immediate action that the city needs to go in and resolve something, it has that authority to do that, then, then build a property. And then also, there's up to criminal prosecution in there for the, if it's determined a misdemeanor at that severity. And so definitely, when we get to those tougher cases that require more stringent timelines and stronger penalties, staff historically and continues to anticipate that we work with the city council, a city attorney to figure out next steps in how we balance, because we still need to meet the terms of our ordinance and state law as far as noticing, appeal processes, and following all those different options. Okay. So before you is a typical case. This is, is this typically how, you know, somebody's garbage cans out, they complain, or they have some grass that's too tall in the front yard? Code enforcement receives a complaint via YC 301. We do an onsite inspection to verify the complaint. Is it real or is it just, you know, wrong address or what? Once the complaint is verified, code enforcement may make discretionary initial contact. A lot of times, if it's a small thing, you know, they left their garbage can out, somebody left their basketball hoop out, it's, if we, if they see him out on the street or we have a hanger, we hang it on the door and it's more of an educational thing, let them know that, hey, technically in violation of this, but it's an informal education. We'll follow back up with verification that they did respond to that. If there wasn't a response to that, then that's when we'll go into a formal compliance, formal notice, where we'll send the notice with a date, with a reasonable timeline to correct, and then a establishing what the violation is, giving him the, per this ordinance, it gives the exact, the specific noticing requirements as far as the violation, the reasonable time to correct, and the future actions. So we'll follow back up with an inspection. If it's still not been repaired or been remedied, then we start getting into the administrative citation portion, which is an infraction. And they're based on $100 per violation for the first. We give them another notice, reasonable timeline, they don't do it, then it's, and it's, it's $100 per violation per day or when we re-inspect. And so then it stair steps up to a maximum of $500 per violation per subsequent citation. So that's your typical. And most of the time, we get for small items, voluntary compliance, but it's usually noticing and reminding people, kind of pointing out to them that, hey, it needs to be taken care of.
Through the mayor. Ben, having had several years of having to enforce the nuisance ordinance, I'm glad to see that finally we're doing an update to that. I know how difficult it is. So I have a couple quick questions based upon what you've just proposed here. First off, is this all complaint-driven or is this with our code enforcement folks initiating stuff that they see out on their own?
So I would say with resources, that 95% of it's complaint-driven. If they're out there handling, you know, a garbage complaint or weed complaint or a trailer violation, and they're right next door, a lot of times, they'll handle that immediate area. Or if, definitely if it's a health or safety. But many of the times, it's really with homelessness, with weed abatement, with COVID-19 education, and then just city priorities as far as how they flex with mobile vendors, usually their time is pretty committed with, with the one and a half staff members that we have right now.
One of the things that, you know, it's intangible, which is the culture of trying to gain compliance versus, you know, voluntarily versus, you know, the heavy hand, because most of the time, if I'm getting correspondence from citizens, it's because something like weeds happened and that there's a, what they view as a citation is probably just the voluntary notice.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the fact that, you know, trying to knock on the door and establish some form of communication at the time of discovery is great. I think that consistency is a big issue, right? I mean, we could both agree on that is, someone makes a complaint about a, an awning, a metal awning, I'll use as a real prime example. And so, we're duty-bound to go deal with that complaint, but there might be 10 others in the neighborhood, but the only person that's getting it is the one that's complained upon. How do we plan on dealing with that? Because you're putting a lot more teeth into this ordinance, it looks like.
So those are definitely some real issues. And consistency is definitely the endeavor for me because I get those complaints regularly and so does our staff where, hey, why are you picking on me about my, my trailer went right across the street? You didn't do anything for, for this person. And so particularly to the awnings, the way I tend to handle this and with through, through guidance from our city manager and our council, is that with this ordinance, it provides a mechanism to put a notice on the deed. And so when you put a notice on the deed, the way I anticipate this playing out is that when the property owner goes to sale or when they go to refinance or when they go to get their insurance updated, there's going to be this notice on the deed to correct. And in order for them to get that to clear, their bank's going to tell them that, hey, we're not going to clear this until it's cleared with the city. And so that's going to put the burden onto private property owners to do that. It's not, it's not mandating this code, but that is an option. And so in order to be consistent, if the city decides we're going to go out after carports and unpermitted buildings, that, that's where consistency, if it, if they come in from complaints or if they come in through building inspection that we see them, that we're going to basically put this notice to correct onto the deed. And then it's not a fine, but it really, and then we, and we tell people, if you're going to go do this without a permit, it's going to, it's going to cause you that burden. And I would hope that most people realize that, hey, sooner or later, I'm going to have to fix this so I don't go forward with it. Obviously, there would be some outreach and talking to them, but it's really difficult and the city's tried this before, to go chase all these carport guys. They pop them up overnight everywhere and we get complaints from the neighbors about them. And I don't have the willpower or the resources to go out and fine this guy thousands of dollars because he doesn't meet his, his carport when the guy across the street has it in place.
Well, that's, that's my concern, you know, having lived in that world for a bit and now living on a different side, and you're hearing the same things I'm hearing, which is you're picking on me, but you're not, you're not dealing, my neighbor gets away with it. Why? I just want to make sure we have a good understanding of how the city's going to handle that because the disparity is a problem. The last question I have at least so far is, you showed a picture of a swimming pool in the backyard. My understanding is, again, this is from weed abatement more than swimming pool stuff, is the city can't act unless it can see it in clear view. Is that still the case? So if, if a neighbor complains about their, their weeds in someone's backyard as an example, we cannot take action unless we can see it clearly from the street. Is that still the case?
That is my understanding. That is my understanding and Roy is online and also Eric, they could add to that. My understanding is we could ask permission and then if they give us permission or if the neighbor gives us permission, but please add to it.
Sure, if I could quickly address that one. The way the ordinance is drafted and the way the law reads is if we can see the violation from a public space, whether a street or a sidewalk, alleyway, then we can cite for the violation or if we can see it from an adjacent property where we've we've been granted permission to enter that property, then we could also cite based on that. We cannot force somebody to let us into their yard to inspect. We can ask permission and we are required to ask permission before seeking a warrant to enter the property to inspect. But as long as we can see it from any sort of public space or an adjacent private property where the property owner has granted us permission to access that property, we can use that information that we gather as a basis for code enforcement.
Okay.
May I add a little bit as well? That particular photograph came from a property that we were in the process of red tagging because of theft of electricity, et cetera. It was a myriad of issues at that particular property that gave us legal access to the backyard and that's how we got that photograph.
Thanks. I just know that in the past, neighbors will complain and say, hey, I can see it, but they're they're up on the ladder or they're up on the roof. And that just is where we get into a little bit of a dilemma and that's all. I think if you put the expectation out there that we're going to be taking care of backyards, we better be careful.
Absolutely understood.
Typically, they would be required to be able to see it not from standing on a ladder, but if it's kind of what we call the open fields doctrine. So if I'm standing in somebody's backyard and I can see it from, you know, where I'm standing in their backyard, then that information is easily is fairly accessed. Or the other thing is if it's a two-story home and I can look out the window of the two-story home, that also constitutes open fields, but it's really not reasonable and courts would frown if we had code enforcement or or other city staff going up on roofs and taking photos or, you know, using drones or things like that. It's really, we're limited to the same search requirements as a police officer. So the typical one being the open fields doctrine where as long as we can go and we have permission to enter an adjacent property and we can see it from that adjacent property, then that information we gathered can be used against that property owner.
So how about you're in the neighbor's yard, side yards, property side yards, the neighbor gives you permission, how about looking over the fence? Is that considered legal, looking over a fence? The neighbor complains, you look over the fence, they got tons of trash, is that considered legal?
Typically, I would I would say you can argue that it is, but we would prefer not to do something like that, meaning we would want it to be where I'm standing there and when I look and it say it's a four-foot fence, I could see over the four-foot fence and clearly see it. If it's a six-foot fence, a seven-foot fence, and I have to climb up and put a camera over the top of the fence to see it or stand on a ladder, we wouldn't the the issues with the open fields doctrine may not apply. So we would we would not recommend staff engage in those kind of activities. However, if I could go into the house and up to the second floor and look out a bedroom window and clearly see that property from that bedroom window, then it would be subject to the open fields doctrine.
Thank you.
I have a question on, you know, in the age of all these wildfires, if you have a neighbor that will let the weeds go out of control and we're all surrounded by wooden fences in our backyard, you can have a big disaster or something. Is there some latitude there in the name of safety that we might be able to take?
Not not really. The preferred option would be to ask for permission to enter to inspect. And once the property owner has denied us permission to enter, then we would go to the court and seek an inspection warrant to determine whether there is a code violation and that at that point we can assess the the property, determine whether it requires immediate abatement or whether a notice and a reasonable opportunity to cure the violation is warranted at that point.
All right, thank you.
Through the mayor, Ben, how many code enforcements do we have?
Code enforcement cases?
Staff.
Code enforcement staff. So currently we have one and a half. We have a retired continuity and so a 50% and a one full-time Eric Ball with us.
How many open cases do we have at this moment?
Eric, can you help me on that one? I don't know if I have.
Currently, I know I have a little over 100. Lincoln, how many do you have open right now? He thinks he's got probably 30 or so that are open yet.
How many of those cases have floated all the way through where you we don't have the deed part at this point, correct?
There's different options, Eric. It seems like we're continually working with these processes playing out for years, unfortunately, on some of the liens and the foreclosures and demolitions of the houses. Eric, please add to it, but it sounds like to me every couple of months, it seems like we resolve kind of one of these longstanding issues or a fire comes up.
Yeah, varied processes, whether the property owner finally sells a property and it gets mitigated and brought into compliance through a new owner, whether, yeah, vacant house that homeless people are staying in and it burns, that brings in processes that we can then go in and abate and fix. But yes, there regularly, we're working at all those long-term ones. It can be frustrating how long some of them take, but we're looking for compliance on all those issues.
Okay, thank you.
And so Eric, you might be able to add to it, but regularly, usually when the backyard is a complete mess, the front yard's usually complete mess. And so a lot of times there's a different code violation that could be issued on the front. So say that looked rather bluntly, but it's typically the case.
Usually, usually people with messy backyard have something wrong in the front yard too. So you get to address something and at least have the conversation and say, hey, if if the front yard's looking like this, what's your backyard look like? Please fix it too.
Also, to add to the typical scenario is that anytime there's compliance within that process, the city will then cease cease moving forward with future enforcement and then work to resolve that matter where it's at. And then this new code specifies those appeal processes or some of the discretion as to how you close that case. So this is the next scenario, which is to highlight some of the options, some of the tools that are in this in this ordinance regarding enforcement. And so this is a blighted property scenario with an unwilling owner occupant. And so the first process is real similar to what we just discussed, but it's the administrative citation route. So you ask permission to inspect the property. If permission is denied, you seek an inspection warrant, conduct an inspection. You prepare a notice to abate property nuisances, which identifies the code violations observed upon the property during the inspection and the time period to make the needed repairs. The notice will also identify the time and place to file an appeal and the potential administrative penalties for not removing or repairing the code violations. We file a notice of pending code enforcement action with the county recorder, which will appear on the property's title report. This is optional, but in those extreme cases that we're not having a willing occupant, this is an option for us. We inspect the property after the time period has expired and issue administrative citations for each violation which remains unrepaired, unremoved. Each code violation is separate violation and each day it remains a new violation. So penalties per violation infraction, a hundred dollars per day, $200 per day, $500 a day, they go up with if it's determined a misdemeanor, then it's $250 per day, $500 a day or $1,000 per day with a maximum and then that continues. After a certain amount, administrative penalties is reached, which will depend on the value of the property, we would seek approval of the city council to assess the penalties, including any costs associated with an appeal as a special tax to be included on the county property tax rule. Record the special assessment and lien against the property with the county recorder. If administrative penalties remain unpaid after three years, we would then seek court approval for of a foreclosure on the property to receive the assessed penalties from the lien sale of the property. And so with that, you can see there's a lot of steps and a lot of notices and a lot of time associated with that. And those are for the harder cases through the administrative process. So the receivership, so this is a scenario where you have a property that typically there's an ownership that is incapable, incapable or just totally unwilling to manage their affairs, potential bankruptcies, et cetera. And so on the receivership, you determine the value of the property via an appraisal. If sufficient equity exists in the property, we'd seek court appointment of a receivership to conduct the rehabilitation of the property. Once rehabilitated, the property is sold and the city will receive payment from the sale proceeds for any costs associated with a code enforcement action and initiating the receivership. Roy is available. I'm sure there's and with these and determining what option, typically it's a team effort with the attorney, with code enforcement and with any other departments is what the most probable scenario to use for for compliance. So and then there's the immediate abatement. This is typically reserved for emergency, health and safety. Eric gave me a quick example that they've used in their code training, code classes is if you if you go by and you see a open pool that's in a near a park where the kids are playing with no fence around it. With this, you know, it'd be immediate hazard to children. This would basically give you the authority to go in there and put a fence up or somehow to correct the issue immediately. And so I'll walk through these here, but that's kind of a scenario that would be an emergency for a health and safety issue or or, you know, immediate fire. Request permission to enter the property and abate the nuisance unless the nuisance constitutes an immediate threat to public health and safety. You seek an inspection and abatement warrant for the property. Enter the property and abate, remove, repair the nuisances, provide the property with notice of the nuisance and grounds for immediate abatement, provide an opportunity to appeal the notice, seek approval of the city council to assess the cost of abatement, including any costs incurred for the appeal as a special tax been included upon the county property tax rules, record the special assessment lien against the property with the county recorder. Again, if the costs of abatement remain unpaid after three years, seek approval to foreclose on the property recovery assessed cost from a lien sale on the property. So fiscal impact, currently we're budgeted 1.5 code enforcement officers. It's approximately $120,000 per year. Historically, there has not been a substantial offsetting revenue from citations. Looks like we receive less than $500 a year in revenue. Additionally, in the CIP budget, we've allocated approximately $50,000 a year excluding this year for abatement for city properties, which is also tied to homelessness and various miscellaneous issues around the city. With code enforcement, there's I don't know if you're ever going to meet the need. I could put a full-time person just to deal with signs. They could go around and address window signs, the temporary signs people put up, you know, another full-time person for homelessness, health and safety. And so we we try to manage with what we have and prioritize as we can. And so with that, the current priorities, not in specific order, but health and safety issues, homelessness, camping ordinance, blight issues, COVID-19 education right now, reactive responses to cases, complaints via Y C three one one, and then any proactive responses to city priorities if there's a current need to address a certain concern. So with that, I recommend that you conduct a public hearing and then introduce an ordinance replacing Uba City Municipal Code Title Four, Chapter Eight, Nuisance Abatement Code and waive the first reading. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If you don't have any, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing on the nuisance ordinance is update is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. We have one comment. You may, just as soon as Tom is done, you can feel free to step on up and then we'll go to the center room and through the computer. Welcome, sir.
My name's Thomas Burns, 1885 Green Gate Street. So this issue, first of all, I keep both my house and business shipshape, okay? But I was out to do a little repair on a house just the other day that is being sold and I actually sent a short video to Dave and Mark. Do you remember receiving that? Okay, so the place next door was a filthy mess and I thought to myself, I feel sorry for this owner here that's going to try and sell that property. And usually, you know, over time, I would, I got a policy of live and let live, you know, I don't want to get into my neighbor's business. And I had a neighbor across the street from me for 20 years who I thought did a pretty poor job of maintaining his place, but I held my peace because of that. But as time goes on, I think society is degrading and I can see the need for the code enforcement because of just the the mess that some people are living in. And it's a blight. It's a blight on the city. Now, also, I thought about this, you know, maybe there should be some public input and a little workshop on something like this because this is very, a lot of gray areas in here. And, you know, some people will use their code enforcement like, you know, like a attack dog on their neighbor, stuff like that. So I think public input should be considered from from quite a different, quite a few people. And, you know, you got to consider this too. Now, right now, they have put a moratorium on evicting people. And so that kind of puts the property owner, if it's a rental, in a big mess. He would have, I mean, how can he do anything if he's got a tenant? That's that's, you know, living in a pigpen. So and on and on and on it goes. And also the code enforcement officer, he needs to be one cool cucumber, not not show up like a mafia. I mean, I dealt with him over the years for certain issues or, you know, there might be a guy who's a back in the day, you know, you might be in a bread truck or Frito-Lay or whatever and parked out front. Some your neighbor don't like it, on and on.
Is that the end or the warning? That's the end? All right. Thank you very much, Tom.
That's the end. Thank you.
Sir?
Judy, we don't have a 30-second buzzer like we used to on those anymore? Or Trish?
While she's doing that, Brian, I just want to comment that that that's a very good microphone. That's working really, I can hear the voice really well. Thank you for that.
It starts changing color.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So you may have not caught him, but we have a three-minute limit on speaking, so have at it.
Let me know when.
It'll beep at you, but welcome.
Benjamin Garcia, 33 years old, live here in Uba City, corner of Clark and Aspen. Born and raised in Uba City. And so from my understanding, we're talking about city nuisance, you know, things that are eyesores and stuff like that. Allegedly, we're in a pandemic. Allegedly, we're in a pandemic. We need to have a little grace for people. People aren't working right now and, you know, we don't know what kind of situation they're in. And if we're going to be on this side of the fence where we're having people not work or shutting down businesses and requiring people to wear masks or, you know, not allowing bowling alleys to open, then we need to have some grace for those people and allow them. We don't, we don't know what kind of situation they're in. And so I feel like, I mean, I don't, I don't really know how this whole thing's supposed to operate, maybe this was all planned or whatever, but, you know, in my opinion, we shouldn't even be talking about this right now. Because, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to shut someone down, we're going to, we're going to give them a citation and then they're not going to pay, they're going to, it's going to get sent to this and that. We're going to go down the line, we're going to put a lien on their house and then they're going to have to pay. And I mean, and, and the meantime, I mean, what's their, what's their health like? I mean, suicide rates are going through the roof, addiction, things like this. I mean, we're putting people in a situation where they can't function. And, and it's all because of this pretend law that our governor has that, and we're all playing on, we're, we're playing with this, with this thing. You know, we all know that these masks don't work, there's no science to back them up. And we're allowing people to do things even though it goes against his edict and we're not arresting people. So let businesses open up, let the bowling alley open up, and then talk about whether or not they can clean up their yard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the building care to speak? All right. And I don't see anybody in the Sutter Room, have been on the computer.
None on the computer.
So if we don't have any more public comment, we'll go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to council.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
Mr. Moody, thank you for all the work that you and your team has done. We started this process not a month ago. This process started way back beginning of the year, right after you became a director and we started talking about this. I want to reassure, reassure people, you hit a couple of key points, education. You know, this is not a mandate to go out and I'm going to knock on your door, Tom, and I'm going to, we're going to go through the administrative process. We took a look at the code and our code enforcement officers doing the best job that they can. They're more reactive than proactive. And I'm going to share some, some stories that has happened in the past year to where we needed more, more teeth to this to resolve some issues because of public safety. Just want to be clear, we really don't want to find people. We really don't want people's property. We want voluntary compliance, we want education. A lot of times, people violate the ordinances of the city out of ignorance because they don't know. You know, I parked my trailer in my driveway, didn't realize that, you know, I couldn't leave it there or leave it in the street for more than so many hours without it having to be moved. You know, I mean, just, it's just, we don't know what the rules are. So we need to do, as you said earlier, educate, whether that be through materials mailed out, workshops, whatnot. The nexus of when we started having this discussion goes back to more of the abandoned properties, more of what's happened in the last 10 years in our city to where when 2008 hit, we had a lot of foreclosures. And believe it or not, there's still properties in this city that were foreclosed 10 years ago that are still bank-owned, not occupied. And I received a phone call from one of our citizens last fall, we had the windstorms, that one of the bank-owned properties out in Royal Ranchero area, a tree had fallen on it. Nobody had responded and here's a tree laying on a house because it's a bank-owned property. The bank is in Southern California, nobody's here taking care of the property. And this is not the first problem with that property because when I picked up the phone and called City Hall, before I gave the address, they went, yep, we know exactly where it's at. What's going on? There's a tree on the property. Okay. And we had to go out and take care of it because it's obviously a safety hazard. This is, when you look at the education piece, and I'm going to date myself, going back when we all grew up, there used to be the old commercial of the Native American Indian on the horse with a tear because of the litter. It's the same concept with our city. Have you taken a drive through our city lately and looked? And a lot of the properties that we have issues with are not because of ignorance or because of being down out of luck on the economy, it's because of just sheer defiance. We have a lot of out-of-town property owners that may or may not have property managers and they're just allowing whatever to happen on the properties. So while we have typically been reactive and we will continue to be reactive, and I agree with the vice mayor, we need to be consistent because I've received those phone calls as well. You know, somebody complained about my awning or somebody complained about my RV and I can look around and there's 10 more in the neighborhood, we need to be consistent. But it's more about the stuff that is just a general blighted property nuisance, health hazard to our community and we have to take pride in our community. These properties are bringing down the property value of the adjoining properties. These problems are not being addressed. So we need to make sure that this ordinance, which I know Mr. Moody and his team has put a lot of time in, to bring it into compliance, to give us the authority to help educate and kind of nudge things along a little bit because we just want our city to look beautiful. We want our city to be safe. And that's really what these are about because right now you do have a lot of the gray areas going around. This defines a real clear path and if we have a non-compliant property owner, now we've got the tools according to the updated ordinance to get compliance. But as one council member, I tell you, I really don't want to have to go there. I want to be able to go to Tom or Larry's, oh, you just, hey, did you realize that this was an issue? And nine times out of 10, the answer is going to be, no. Hey, do you mind cleaning it up, by the way? How can we help? Let's get you some resources, let's figure this out. It's about taking pride in ownership of our community. And so when I hear things about, you know, you know, turning, and turning a blind eye and I appreciate the video, we have to respect property rights and our constitutionality, but at the same time, we got to take ownership of our city and we have to protect our residents. And, you know, we've had incidences that I can drive up and down Cluse Avenue and see properties. We had a house out on Butte House Road that you were referring to, issues that caught fire not once, but twice in a matter of a few hours. And they, the owner just said, let it burn to the ground and they let it burn to the ground so it can be gotten rid of. We've had houses on major thoroughfares that have gone through code violations and renovations that I know code enforcement worked with very patiently. And thank you too, gentlemen, because I know you guys have a tough job, so thank you to what you do. But, you know, they worked with the property owner and after probably about, I don't know, my best guess is at least five or more years, they finally got stuck going siding on the one house that everybody knew about on Stabler Lane. It's about, again, ownership, pride, cleaning up our community. And if we don't start with the, the tools necessary to get education and proper compliance, then we're never going to clean up our community. So I just want to say thank you. And there is one thing I want to go back to that you kind of hit on a little bit and we've had the discussion on this and it's in the materials. I think one of the issues, you don't have to go backwards, I can just bring it up. But the issue was about what we would consider abandoned property or vacant property. And under the current language in the new ordinance, the registration of that is basically left to some vagueness, whether it be set by the city manager or you as a department head, to what that would be. And I would hope that we would find some standardization of maybe 90 days to where it's fine if you're trying to rent the property, but if you haven't rented it and it's still vacant after 90 days, go through a small registration process so the city is aware of it because that helps law enforcement, that helps fire, that helps code enforcement to not only protect the property, but it, it helps overall with the awareness because if it's vacant, you could get squatters, they could be stealing electricity like I heard mentioned earlier at some point. You know, they know these things should not be happening. We want these properties rented, we want development in our community, but we've got to take pride in ownership. So I would recommend that to something standard. And I just throw out 90 days as an idea, but it's just an awareness so that it helps our men and women that keep us safe.
I can respond or answer any of the responses? I, I guess just to add is that, to add on to Councilmember Shaw's, is that absolutely the goal is voluntary compliance. It saves everybody a lot of paperwork, everybody a lot of headaches if, if there's education and people take that step to clean and maintain their property. And so, and then absolutely with this COVID-19, staff is, is aware and we're regularly working with, just today I was talking with Eric regarding the demolition of a, an illegal add-on and they can't get a contractor right now just because of that. And so that window of reasonable time, we're absolutely considering that with, with the goal to voluntary compliance. And as all of you are aware, Uba City is still at that level where, we're still a small town. We still, you know, typically the person, if I don't know the person, it's probably a friend of mine that knows the person. And so with that, with the goal for consistency and that, I'd be willing to straight face, be a friend of mine, that this is how we handle it and this is the process that we need to go through. And so that is definitely the intent of our department as they go out and interact with the different individuals. As far as public notice, this is really one of the steps with this being a multi-step process for the, for the code, that it's, it's for the, for the public to interact right now and then going forward before it's adopted. But I want to hit on this is we're not substantially changing, there's, there's rules in place, there's an ordinance in place that, that says you need to take the garbage and the weeds out of your front yard. And so there isn't a huge change besides some of these highlights. And regarding the, the vacant building, vacant building plan, which is a substantial change, how, how that reads for the rest of the council is for, for vacant properties, the city manager or his, her designee may issue an order to submit a vacant building plan to the property owner and require the payment of a fee as required under this section. And so it goes into this vacant building plan, the intent is, there is not a certain threshold in this ordinance, how it's written, pros and cons. So with that, it's, it, with, with having that flexibility that typically it'd be from reactive, we get a complaint about a property or there's a really high visibility property that we want to know what's going on because it affects health and safety or pedestrian travel on an arterial. But the, the way we foresee this is how it's written is that there'd be a vacant property, it becomes a nuisance abatement, we receive notice of it through YC 311 or through the public of that. We then go open a case on that and then if there's not immediate remedy, then we work through this plan where they need to submit a plan that details out what they're supposed to do. And with the first plan submitted, there's no cost. The, the plan lasts for, I believe, 90 days? 180 cal-
No, 180.
180 calendar days. If it continues to be vacant and they have to resubmit a plan, then they'll pay a fee and then that fee's based on how often we have to go out there, how often we have to manage it. The concern, the, the pros with having that flexibility is that we don't have staff regularly checking every single property that comes up for rent. And then just how do we monitor the 90 days and then how do we, you know, I don't want to get us into a position where the timeframe's so, so short that it's really ineffective where we're not catching them until we receive the complaint on it. So I would almost recommend if it's, if there is a desire to have a specific threshold, that maybe it's based on a nuisance isn't, nuisance is, is obtained on the site. We receive a nuisance case on the site and it's not resolved within a certain amount of period. Maybe if we get the, aware of the nuisance and then it's not resolved within that reasonable period of time for the first one, we have some sort of threshold with that. But it definitely, that's at the discretion of the council.
Through the mayor, I, with 130 cases right now, Eric and Lincoln, so how, can you walk me through, let's say today is Tuesday, which it happens to be, so you receive a complaint tomorrow? How long then does that take to get to the particular complaint that you received from the YC 311? How long will it take you or Lincoln to get there? Because you have 130 cases pending and so can you walk me through that?
We are very responsive. We get to the, the cases that are being reported very quickly. Sometimes we're there within minutes after they're reported, usually within 24 hours. The longest it may take would be about a week. And just because of staff time and other issues that we have to, to get done.
How has the response been when you go and educate the community member, whoever that is, if they're a homeowner, a business, or what have you? What is their response when you're talking to them and educating them about the, the reason you're there?
Yeah, and thank you. It's, it's very mixed. We do, many people do say, oh, sorry, I, I knew you'd be coming by, I'll get that addressed. And they, they deal with it very quickly and, and do a very good job. Our citizens are good. But every now and then we have somebody who just for whatever reason doesn't want to comply, doesn't want to work with, disagrees that the city ought to be involved in any of this. And those are ones that take time for whatever their reasons are, whether they're incapable or just unwilling. It takes some time for some people to, to get around to it.
So then for those that get taken care of, they're probably within a week if you're responsive quickly, I'm guessing on that. So then those that are challenging, how long's it, may that take? May it take a month? May it take a six months or how long? Because that home could be vacant and homeless individuals can be in there or there could be robberies. I don't, you know, I'm, I'm assuming at this point, but.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's part of what I, I as a code enforcement officer am, am looking forward to with this rewrite of our code.
Okay.
Because we have some cases that we have worked them for better than a year. And because we knew that we had some weaknesses in our current code and being able to, to really go all in and have the teeth, we held off. And so the new code will give us that availability to reassess, recommunicate, and really let people know, hey, if you don't do it, we have this step that will occur. Most people respond in a pretty reasonable time, but we work with each of our, each of our citizens that, you know, what are the reasons for their issues?
That's great to hear. So do you, if, if you have 100 cases, how many of those are challenging out of 100 Based on your experience?
Most of the ones that I, I are longstanding, that's most of what those cases are, the 100.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, so there's a lot of cleanup. You know, probably 20, 30, maybe up to 40 of the cases are ones that I expect to get compliance pretty soon. It, it's the other bulk that they start to stack a little bit because they are time-consuming. And again, new processes, we're hoping to be able to mitigate, mitigate some of that.
Great, that's great to hear. So thank you for- Great. That's great to hear. So thank you for helping me understand more of that and how you're helping our community in resolving this issue. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a negative experience towards the end that it gets dealt with in the education process and the conversation when you're meeting with him and Lincoln as well. Thank you for that. I think mainly for, for the, this particular process, I'm interested in knowing what the public thinks in general because this is the first reading, this is the introduction. It's quite a complex new ordinance. But I would be really interested in hoping for the community at large to have a greater input and sharing with us what their thoughts are on their views or experiences. If you have, for example, if you have been a person that has in the past been approached by one of our code officers, it would be really nice to hear from you if you're watching right now to help us understand your perspective, your view of how we're doing as a city. This particular ordinance is not signed, sealed, and delivered at this point. We're just reviewing it. We're having a conversation. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to add, a touch on two issues quickly that were raised in the public comment that I think might help enlighten some of the aspects of the ordinance and the new components of it. One, I want the public and council to know and be reassured that this ordinance does not authorize staff to simply immediately go out and start citing people. Under the law, we are required to give people reasonable time to correct any code violations. And the reasonableness of that time is going to be determined based on the severity of the code violation. So an example could be, you know, graffiti is not going to be as serious as the open pool with no fence. In a situation like that, we may go in right away and fence it off in order to protect the public health and safety. Whereas with the graffiti, we'd give them a notice and let them know, hey, we see this graffiti, can you please clean it up? And give them, you know, 15, 30 days and work with them on something like that. And then the other critical component of this is the voluntary compliance goal. So it's designed to give as much flexibility to the staff in order so that they can gain voluntary compliance because no one wants to, you know, issue administrative sites or have to go get warrants and do like all those things. Our ultimate goal is in nine times out of 10, it's as simple as letting somebody know, like, hey, you know, this is a violation, can you please clean it up? Or what can we do to help you get this clean? Can we pair you with a community organization, nonprofit, or city staff to get, you know, get this remedied? Let us know where you are. So, you know, it does take into account people's circumstances and the situation that they're facing on top of also whatever potential safety risks those violations may pose to the, to the public at large. And then the other component in, in drafting this is we definitely looked at it and tried to be as consistent with what the law requires and fair to the public, you know, in the administration. So we want to give staff tools to enforce the code, but we also want, you know, the citizens to have fair opportunity to do the, you know, seek voluntary compliance or, you know, seek help from the city. And so that's really kind of the background of the drafting of this with, you know, Eric's help and Ben and all kind of putting our heads together to give something to the council and the community that they could be really proud of and not feel is, you know, some oppressive force to beat them down, but rather to, you know, pick, pick the community up and give, give the staff the options to address these, you know, situations that are going, you know, for long periods of time without any, any abatement. So thank you for that time.
All right. Good. We're clear. Obviously, we've already had public comment. And anybody else care to, any questions or comments? Nothing? All right. We need a motion.
Through the mayor.
Yep. My only suggestion is Councilmember Shaw did talk about a threshold. If that is recommended to be added, we would add to the motion to add that clause into it. And so it would, it would save us from coming back to city council with the, with the introduction of that, then coming back again to adopt.
With that, I mean, understanding more of, after reading it and then your explanation a while ago, almost having that flexibility, I think, I think might be good because we need to see how this is going to work itself through with the vacant properties. And as you mentioned, pulling that in and notifying the property owner once you receive a complaint, so to speak, through YC 311 or a phone call. Right now, that would be your mechanism. And I think going through this first revision, because this is a living, breathing document that we can fine tune as time goes, I would be comfortable with that myself, even though I brought those up. So if you're comfortable with it, Mr. Moody.
Absolutely.
And then, given that, then, Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce an ordinance replacing Uba City Municipal Code Title IV, Chapter 8, Nuisant Abasement Code, and waive the first reading.
Second.
All right. First and a second to approve that. Action item B. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to number nine, shopping court, shopping cart ordinance amendment.
All right. Have me for another fun one. So, so some good pictures. Unfortunately, by cleaning up the town one step at a time here. And so, so bear with me as I get into this a little bit. And so before you is in regards to considering as to whether to initiate an ordinance update to the Uba City Municipal Code Title V, Chapter 22, to shopping carts. And so it's important tonight, I want to stress that this is a little bit different than the last ordinance process that we just went through, is right now that we do not have the code established and we're not introducing any sort of legal code. And so right now, it's really to consider whether we want to open, go, give staff direction to go in, modify it. And if there are areas to modify, where would you like us to focus? And then we would come back with that. If that's council's discretion purview, then we would come back and bring that to you. So we're one step before the previous item. So, so council's provided input that there's potential interest in modifying the shopping cart ordinance to better meet the city's needs. The purpose with tonight's council action is to have a discussion to provide staff direction on desired changes, if any at all, where staff will then work to make those changes if desired and bring back to council for review and ultimate adoption. Should there be direction, staff will need to work internally with city attorney, various departments, coordinate outreach, feedback from businesses, et cetera, to develop those, that specific code language. And so with this, this presentation provides background information on, and potential items for consideration. But the possible changes are really, again, a blank slate ranging from no action, modifying to complete repeal. And so the shopping cart, the shopping cart ordinance that is currently in the code is relatively new. You know, for municipal code with the city starting in the early 1900s, this was adopted in December 2017 and recently, and came into effect January 2018. So a little background, there's approximately 35 retail businesses that provide rolling shopping carts. The print's really small there, but they range from less than 10 at the Power Mart to 800, I think, at Walmart as our top, as our top place with carts. So you Winco's, I've heard anywhere from 450 to 600. And, you know, Target, for reference is, where's Target at? 300. And so, so a wide range of carts with the, the smallest being less than 10 for a category and the larger is up to 800 at Walmart. Here's a breakdown of carts versus stores. So we have three that are less than 10, 12 in the 10 to 40 cart range, 10 in the 40, 90 to range, zero in the 90 to 150 range, and then 150 plus, nine stores. Currently, for additional information, carts that have wheel locks on them, that we'll talk about a little bit later, that are 150 stores include Bel Air, Winco, and Food Max. So here's our problem, right? Everybody sees this around town. It's frustrating. It takes a lot of resources. It hurts businesses and trying to figure out how to resolve it timely. So it's, the visual blight doesn't remain there. And so with the implementation of the shopping cart code as it stands, we saw a drop in the YC 311 reports. So 2017, 697 cases. The, the new code came into effect early 2018. We had it dropped to 303. And now we're in that 130, 120. We're on target right now with COVID-19. I don't know how that plays into it exactly, but we're on target for about 110 this year. With the current ordinance, if you're a business that has nine or fewer, you're exempt from an abandoned shopping cart prevention program. So that's a, it's a long-winded term that basically establishes these rules that if you're in this matrix of what you need to do to manage your carts. So with the implementation, so, let me flip to my page. So with the implementation of the shopping cart ordinances, businesses are required to establish an abandoned shopping cart prevention program depending on the following matrix, with the intent that the ASCPP requires ownage to manage their carts. So the ASCP requires signage stating unauthorized cart removal is illegal, establishing methods to prevent cart removal, retrieval within 24 hours of notification, and provisions for contact phone number information for the stored management for notification when we receive a complaint about an abandoned cart. So we have somebody to call. And so in that matrix, there's a big jump from the, from the 90 to the 91. With that, the, there's a requirement for the, for this business to contract with a retrieval company. And so 10 to 90, there's an option for the owner can retrieve it. Once you go above 90, right now in the ordinance, they have to contract with a retrieval company. Additionally, new businesses, 10 or more carts are, businesses with 10 or more carts are required to install a standardized cart containment system with a wheel locking or stopping mechanism that is issued in conjunction with electronic magnetic barrier along the perimeter. And so what we're saying is that if you're a new business, you have 10 or more carts in the ordinance, you're, you need to put in one of these new magnetic wheel locks. And this is something I pulled off the internet. But really what it is, is that one of the wheels, it has a magnetic mechanism, magnetic motor. And once it goes across, an established barrier that's either established with an underground line or, and Lincoln's very familiar with these from the few systems that have been put in, that they, they set up different type of sensors that send out the signal either in the store or at that perimeter to basically engage that wheel lock.
When you go to, when you go to Marshalls, you can't push that cart out further. It pushes you back. So it can be dangerous.
Really?
Yeah.
Additionally, so we have the wheel lock requirement for new businesses over 10. And then also, there's a stipulation in there that existing businesses, if they, if they fail to comply. So if, so the wording is, is may be required. And so it's, and so with this, we have not pulled this button on any, any existing businesses. We've, we've worked with them and through that, the last three with Winco, Food Max, and I know Bel Air, trying to work with them to figure out a solution. And so right now, there's that option that the city could require that. But it's, it's, there's no set threshold put in there. It's, it's a may. Carts. So the number in here, I've heard, depending if you refurbish one for $100, I've heard typically 120, 150 bucks, maybe as high as 200, depending on how many you buy and how fancy the cart is. My understanding is they shoot for a 10-year life with 35,000 shopping uses. It's kind of the generic term is what I pulled off online. Cart retrieval contractor, local businesses are telling us that the price ranges from 150 to $200 per month for a one to two day a week pickup and $400 to $500 per month for a three to five day a week pickup. So those larger companies, they're, they're leaning towards that three to five day pickup. And then a lot of each contractor, of course, their contract is slightly different with most of the companies being out of Sacramento. This is where we run into some difficulties and frustration is that we become aware of an abandoned cart. They, we let them know via their contract, and then it goes to their contract retrieval. But then they have a subcontract that basically says, hey, we'll come up when you have two or three cart minimum. And so that's where we run into some of these delays and, and working with those businesses to get them out off the street sooner than later. Wheel locking systems, they really vary depending on the, the number, the type of system selected, and then the maintenance. So the numbers that we, the budget numbers, you know, approximately for Winco in 2019, 600 carts, $43,000 to install, and then about 800 to $1,200 per quarter, so every three months to maintain. And so I did, just trying to compare it apples to apples, that was $72 a cart with the 56 cents a month per cart fee. Food Max, two years ago, 200 carts, $30,000. And they, they didn't give us any hard numbers, but they said, hey, we're roughly the same maintenance. So I use the $800 a month cost. And so you could see, there's a substantial difference in the per unit cost just because of the volume. But you're looking, and it's a substantial cost to get the system in place. And then there is, there's maintenance with the wheel lock. So based on discussion with staff and then also input from council, it's times they, when I look at the code, it's, there's an option, there's a, there's a level that it is working. And so it works where it's, it's decreasing the number of cases that we're seeing out on the street. But it's, there's room for improvement with it. And so with, with that, there's been positive outcomes to the reduction in banning cart complaints and staff associated workload. It did put a burden on businesses while many of the individuals that take the carts were unaffected. And so the ordinance has been in effect for a little over two years to provide some areas of discussion as to what is working and what is not when reviewing the staff. And so I've put together this list of potential discussion items, potential modifications for review, and I'll work through those one by one. But these are definitely by no means required that we go forward. They're just for discussion and really open to council purview. And then at the end, when I ask for a recommendation as whether to proceed or not, I'm hoping to basically pick which options that you would like us to tackle, to work through. And so the first one, A, separate the ordinance into two sections that clearly delineate the law and consequences to individuals who remove the carts from store locations. And so right now, there's a state law, Business and Professionals Code, that says it's, it's illegal to remove a cart from the premises. In the city's current shopping ordinance, it's, it's buried down in the bottom of the code and it's vague as it could be considered an infraction or a misdemeanor. And so with this option, this would basically separate it out where we clearly define a section that says, with really the intent to match the Business and Profession Code, with, with, with input from the police department, the preferred misdemeanor option is recommended where it matches the Business and Professionals Code, and then it also requires a report. So instead of being an infraction that they could possibly get writ, thrown, ripped up and thrown in the garbage, with the misdemeanor, there's a report written, there's typically pictures taken, there's more evidence as to, as to the basis for it. And it gives a tool for, should a cart need to be seized, it can be, is my understanding. Obviously, there's, there's issues with prosecution and, and how that, how that plays out, but the intent- But the intent with this one would be to match the State Business and Professions Code. Option B, modify the cart threshold for numbers to eight small businesses. And so there, there's, you know, these nine or fewer, 10 to 99, 91 or more. I know when this code first went out, there was a lot of outreach to the businesses trying to establish that number. And then at the council level, they also modified it. They tweaked it to make it a little bigger. And so with this, there's an option, do we want to make it a little bigger or do we want to set thresholds? So for the small businesses, instead of being nine or fewer that are exempt, do we make it 20? Do we give the option for those businesses such as New Earth or the grocery outlet that are, that are right on the verge of the 90? Maybe we give them a little more where we move it up to 140, 150, where you're not, it's not a big box store like a Winco or a Walmart. Item C, modify the retrieval period from 24 to 48 hours to be, to provide more time for businesses. This might seem counterproductive, but it does give an option for those smaller businesses and they're not in violation of the law. Because right now, 24 hours, my understanding from Lincoln is really by the time they notice them, logistically come get it, they're pushing that 24-hour limit. So that would be an option. D, require the containment system such as a wheel locking or stopping mechanism to be put in place for retailers of a certain size or for retailers that have a high loss rate with an option for approved phased-in approach. And so this would be an option that, right now, we have it on the new businesses, that you determine a number and you put it on place. That you say that this is a cost of business, we want the wheel locks to go in. But as, as you've seen, there's a substantial cost to that. And so there's impacts both ways with that. Provide businesses with an option regarding the contracted cart retrieval requirement if an effective containment system is in place. And so this is where I run into a little frustration. If, if I have these businesses that just put in $50,000 worth of improvements, do we need to ding them for the $500 a month for a retrieval contract if they could adequately meet that with their own forces? And so maybe provide that option. So if, if they have a containment system and it's working, they don't additionally have to have a contain, or a contractor on retainer if, if it's not needed. F, remove the new business requirement related to containment system. So new businesses would adhere, adhere to the same requirements as existing businesses. So that's really, right now, it's written for 10 or more. So if a new business comes in, that, that wheel lock system would be required. And then G is really other potential points that the council have for discussion or that you would like staff to look into further discussion. Fiscal impact. It's staff time to administer and force the ordinance as appropriate with alternatives to leave the current ordinance in place as is, completely repeal the ordinance, or provide staff with direction for modifying the proposed ordinance. So my recommendation tonight is discuss the ordinance and council priorities. Review potential ordinance modifications A through G. Consider then direct staff to initiate the ordinance update with council-determined modification items. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, the city attorney and code enforcement staff is here to help answer any specific questions.
You knew this was coming. First and foremost, I'm not trying to kill the messenger, okay? When this ordinances were introduced to the city, I was not on the council and I was not in favor. As a retail business owner who admittedly does not use shopping carts, I am always cognizant of the cost of doing business. And when you start to penalize businesses for the illegal criminal acts of those who are stealing their, their equipment, it just rubs me wrong. And, and we'll, we'll leave that where it may right now. I guess I just have some questions and then I'd love to roll down through your A through G. First off is, has staff taken a look at what other jurisdictions are doing? And are we consistent with what other jurisdictions are doing? Are we, are we more restrictive? Are we less restrictive? Are we right in the same ballpark? Do we know?
So at this point, I don't, I have not reached out to other agencies. I know the original ordinance, it was taken from more of a Bay Area. There was, of the 400 cities, there was, there was a certain number in the hundreds of how many have implemented a shopping cart ordinance. But I have not specifically compared those numbers. And with that, that's definitely, if there's interest in that, we would do that work, additional work and outreach.
And you mentioned outreach. That was next on my list. I'm thinking alike. Is that I know you mentioned, and I'm not aware because I wasn't here then, about outreach at the initial implementation of this. Since that time, have we reached out to, to these, the list of current users of carts to seek any feedback from them on what's working, what's not working, any of their thoughts? Because I think in reality, something that we do that involves them on a financial basis is something that we, I believe we should take some time and give them the opportunity at least to voice their opinions on, on this. It's inclusive. I think it's consistent with, with what we're trying to do as far as being business-friendly. And I, I as one would be terribly interested in hearing what it is they have to say about how this affects their bottom line.
So at this point, we have not, just with not knowing exactly what we might change or if we change at all. But that would definitely be included in the plan before we would come back.
I think, I think some of your, some of your businesses that are using the wheel lock because it is a substantial investment, I'm assuming that part of their decision, if not most of their decision, was probably just loss prevention, not necessarily complying with the city's ordinance. But because of the cost of the carts, that they, they decided that it was worth their while to make that investment, which is certainly their business right to do. But I, at the other time, I think anytime we're imposing something, and I've talked to a couple grocery people and since this has been one of those issues for me for a couple of years, you know, it, it is a big, it is a big investment of which the only return is, is the prevention of the loss of their cart. But that's an illegal act. And I'm certainly not going to look at our police chief in the back and say, man, they need to be the cart police either. I know how that works. We get a cart in our, in our, in our business not belonging to us, and that's a mess. It's full of stuff and they have property in it and everything else. So I understand the burden and I understand the need for us to address this shopping cart concern. But at the same time, I'm not comfortable at all putting the burden on the businesses. And when you talk about a new business that comes in with 10, you know, 10 carts and we're going to, you know, say, hey, look, you got to put a wheel lock system on. Again, it, it appears to me anyway that that is not business-friendly. And as we're looking at some of these other things that, that you have been fortunate enough to tell us, we've got other businesses that are coming, that are potentially taking a look at us. They're not small shopping cart people. Is this something they're going to look at and go, well, what kind of place is this to come to? They're going to hit me with this and I never get this in another jurisdiction. I'm making an assumption, but I'm also saying, stating it would, it would be a cost of doing business. And I don't think there's a lot of return on the investment other than the loss. So if you don't mind going through A through G, I really would like to give you my quick opinion on those.
Absolutely. I got A and F down. And so.
Well, no, you don't.
Go ahead. So go A. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at my paper.
Okay, so A, I definitely think, I agree with your assumption about the two sections. I think that makes a lot of sense in making things consistent. Modifying the cart threshold numbers to aid small business, I think that yet to be determined. Again, I'd like to see input from the businesses on this. So we know with, you know, quantitatively, what, what the impact to their business would be. Modifying the retrieval period, I guess the question, and maybe it's to Eric or, or Lincoln is, so they get, someone calls the 311 system and says, hey, there's a shopping cart at, you know, 1003 St. Louis Lane. 24 to 48 hours, that shopping cart might not even be there, right?
Lincoln, I don't know if you could add to that.
Multiple Lincolns.
Eric, if you could mute yours, I think that might help.
I apologize for that. The issue is, I guess you, Councilman Blumberg, you're talking about the timeframe to pick up carts?
I'm just, I guess the question is more along the lines of you guys become aware that there's an abandoned cart or a cart that's not abandoned and shouldn't have been removed from the property. By the time that makes its way through the system and you get a location, that thing could have been moved in 24 to 48 hours.
Yes, that absolutely happens. That, in a lot of time, it's moved by, you know, persons that are possibly homeless or whatnot. Once there are any kind of a notification, I will immediately enter that in to the car track system. It's a retail and those are the contractor and they have their folks that come and pick it up. Like most businesses here, they're usually on about a one to two-day retrieval of some sort. So yes, to answer your question, yes, that cart can be removed. Sometimes they're not. Sometimes I will personally remove them myself and return them to that specific business. Or if they don't have any type of retrieval service, then I will contact that business and let them know either via email, mostly via email, say, hey, you have a cart at 123 Main Street. And they will send someone to retrieve that. And that information is originally from the cart retrieval information that they filled out with the contact and the estimate number of carts and whatnot. If they had a retrieval service, then that's who the contact would be. But however, that information was provided originally when this ordinance was implemented in 2018.
I, I have received very positive feedback from those that you've reached out to in regards to going and them able to go retrieve their own shopping carts. Does that happen frequently, moderately, less frequently?
I would say that would be less frequently. Mostly the carts that I will specifically deal with are our large business carts. And then you have the, you have other specific carts that are filled with trash or things of that nature. However, that are not going to go back in circulation due to the sanitary conditions, the damage to the wheels of some sort. And those are, those carts, and they're sitting in public somewhere as an eyesore, obviously. Those are removed and placed in refuse.
Okay. So to me, I, I guess, for me, item C, I'm not, I think it bears a little bit more research in regards to, you know, whether you make it two hours or 20 hours or 200 hours, is the cart really going to be there? I, I don't know how that, I don't know how you administer that. So I just think I would take a look at that. And item D, and I tell you what, you know, if, if you, I like to think we're a relatively successful business. But if you came to me and said, hey, I need you to go spend $30,000 or $40,000 on, on shopping cart, wheel locks because some guys are stealing your cart, I'd have a problem with that. So again, I'd like to know the consistency and where, where that's being administered. And, you know, if we're, if we're right in there in the norm, then I guess that's a point of consideration. But I would also, again, like to hear from the retailers on that. Item E, you know, I have heard over the year, couple of years now, that the contracted, we used to have somebody local, I think, that was retrieving carts. And, and then apparently they are not doing that any longer. And so that has been an issue of them having to, to pay higher costs for cart retrieval than initially was made when the ordinance was introduced. So I, again, that's, that's an area of interest for me. Remove the new business requirement. And I think that goes hand in hand with what I've said before. But it sure seems, sure seems a bit onerous to say, hey, you got 10 shopping carts, but you're going to have to put a wheel lock system on them. I mean, that's the smaller person that's probably scrambling to, to, you know, to make a living. So those are my comments. I appreciate you listening. But understand, I understand the gravity and the nature of the, the eyesore and the blight that a shopping cart has. Again, I see them. I've had them dumped at my business. I know it's a, it's a big deal, especially for disposal and, and, and just getting them back to the businesses. But this one, like I said, I don't want to be killing the messenger, but I have my area of concerns.
I wanted to throw it all out there. It's really wide open what we could do to improve it. It wasn't perfect when it's put in place, and so it gives us an option to find a turn it.
Thank you for listening.
Through the mayor. Yeah, Mr. Moody, thanks for bringing this to us. This is one of those that started many months ago. And I know you and I have had a lot of conversations about the shopping carts. And I agree totally with what the vice mayor said so far. We've had conversations about this. And I think where the error of the ways happened was back in 17 and 18 because the council at that time put the entire responsibility on the business owner, period. And that changed our business-friendly approach to people taking a look at us. And it's not a level playing field. We, you know, we just went through the nuisance ordinance and we were talking about educating and talking about working with people and stuff. And we basically grandfathered in the big box stores that were here like Walmart. But if Joe's Mini-Mark wants to go in and have 12 carts, they suddenly have to spend $15,000 to put wheel locks on. It's definitely not a level playing field. And when you looked at the numbers, even though they decreased and you said we were on our track this year for about 110, call it exactly what it is, that's 110 counts of theft that we basically condone. And again, I'm not a proponent of you guys, chief, chasing down shopping carts. But we, three years ago, put all that responsibility on the business. And they're the ones that are having a cost of business, having their property stolen from them. And it's not just the homeless population. And it was even brought up three years ago, oh, it's the mom taking the groceries home or whatnot in the shopping cart and she's going to return it. Well, we're finding those shopping carts at the bus stops, on the corners of intersections, of neighborhoods. They're not getting returned. And that is theft to the businesses. So tonight, it's, it's kind of like you said, this is the start of a much bigger conversation. And we've got to get the, the managers and the owners of the retail establishments, which I've been reaching out to them and come together and have the discussion. Because we don't know what that looks like for the big box store retailers. We'll use Walmart, Lowe's, Target. It may be a corporate standpoint to them. It's just a cost of doing business and they really don't care. They actually might care. We don't know until we have that conversation. But to a, a smaller store, you know, I've been seeing Joann's carts over near my office, and I'm over by Lowe's. I've seen those over there. We've seen Home Depot carts. We've seen, you know, you've got a lot of small retailers, your small markets. We can't put the responsibility on them and say that we are open for business and we're business-friendly. So again, sentiment's his. We're not going after the messenger. We know this was done several years ago, but we need to start that bigger conversation. And I think it starts with A, and we've had this conversation. I think there has to be a separate section that puts responsibility back on the general public that lines up with the business and professions that simply, you know, boil it down to it's illegal to take a shopping cart off the business premises. You know, they, there's plenty of affordable carts out there and things for people to use. If you're taking a cart, you're stealing from a local business, period. Whether your intent is, you know, stealing or not, you're stealing. And so I think that's where it starts. And then we work with all of our businesses here. And because if I had a business and I needed 12 carts, I wouldn't come here if I had to drop another $15,000 into wheel locks when Walmart doesn't have to. So I'd be interested to see what the public has to say. And as we move this forward, I really want to invite all of those retailers to some sort of workshop or meeting or something to get their input. of workshop or meeting or something to get their input because that's going to be extremely valuable. And like the vice mayor said, how do we stack up against other municipalities? And going back to what we've talked about many times through all this COVID stuff and everything else, we're not San Francisco Bay Area. We're not Los Angeles. Let's look at real communities that stack up against Yuba Sutter, Yuba City, see how they're handling it because that's our real litmus test. We're not, you know, a huge metropolitan area. So let's kind of look at those.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Thanks, Ben. I appreciate your PowerPoints. I'm really enjoying the detail and the content. You do really well. And I'm appreciative of the team that you, on the Teams team, Eric and Lincoln joining us tonight. I think that the vice mayor, you did a fabulous job of going down the PowerPoint for, for this particular ordinance that, one of the things that we do as, I don't know if the public knows, but every Monday before a council meeting, normally we meet with the city manager and we have about a one hour meeting, each of us, or sometimes a pair will meet with the city manager and we kind of go through what the agenda may look like, you know, what are the issues and what we're going to be talking about. And each of us have an opportunity to kind of ask our questions, you know, during that time in that meeting. And the reason I'm sharing that is because there were, I had two very specific questions and one was, you know, how did we get here? Meaning, why are we reviewing this shopping cart ordinance? Is there a huge need or are there shopping? I mean, I walk, I ride my bike, so I see them in the community. Second is, have any, have we discussed this topic with local businesses that, that have shopping carts? Because it's important to know what they think, right? If we're going to make any modifications or what this ordinance look like? And I think that one other area that it sounds, a mutual agreement with Councilman Shaw as well, is, you know, what are other jurisdictions doing? We want to have some sort of consistency in our ordinances. And I think I find when we do that kind of consistency, in particular with shopping carts, as we work with, you know, Johnny Burke talked about the homeless issue. And I've heard many times the topic about, you know, these carts being utilized by homeless community members and which they are. And, and then there are community members that I see them, live in apartment complexes or homes. I've seen them pushing their items as well. So I think I would be in agreement and support to know how this would do, how would this be a financial impact on our, our businesses that are currently utilizing these shopping carts? What has been their experience in utilizing or the impact of this particular ordinance that we, that was passed in 2018? And for our team to know what other jurisdictions are doing. And based on that, I would like to then hear a summary from what you compile and then we can have a better conversation when we come back to a city council meeting and say, okay, this is where we're at now. And maybe some of the business owners or the managers of those, you know, like Winko or Walmart would, could come to one of the council meetings and they could report directly to us and what their concerns are or their ideas in reference to this particular ordinance. I, again, if you haven't heard in the last ordinance, in this particular ordinance, I'm interested in hearing from the community. I'm interested in hearing from who those are going to be impacted. In particular, businesses, retail businesses do not need to have additional financial hardship at this moment at all. We need to be very considerate of that. And as we're bringing in these new businesses, maybe there is a question to ask them. What's your experience with the shopping cart ordinances and other areas that you have established business in? Maybe we could be better than the other places and, and take care of this. But to have an ordinance without who it's going to affect, I'm not interested in adding more financial hardship to business owners or community members. So I support with Vice Mayor Boom Garden mentioned and impartial, some of the items that Councilman Shaw as well stated. And Ben, I appreciate you always bringing it all to us and then allowing us to have the process. So thank you for that.
Through the mayor. Ben, on the shopping carts from 17 to date, is that our 311 apps that was at 62017 and 100 in 2020? Is that through our 311 apps? That's the ones that all our city employees picked up, public works crew?
So prior to the ordinance, these were cases that came in to the system. And then as far as how they got picked up, at that point in time, typically it was through public works. They would either have a couple of guys run around each day or they would schedule time every week or biweekly to go out and do a roundup. And so at that point, the duration that they were in the community was longer. So there might be some, some double counting with this is because if you had the public works crew only being able to allocate time every week or every two weeks, then you might have received multiple complaints about the same cart. And so, and just to make, when you look at those numbers, there might be some of that going on.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, the flip side of that too is we also pick up carts that are never entered into the system.
Right. Thank you. So I just wanted to educate staff because we were here at that time in 2017 and 18 when we did this ordinance. Arnaldo was involved. It was a major, it was very time consuming to our staff. It was taking away the duties that they couldn't take care of to make our city run smoothly. So we had two public works employees and a flatbed truck picking up more than, it was about once a week, sometimes a couple of days a week, going all over town. So these six, we're just going to say, we're just going to say 600 in 2017 and now it's down to 12020. So that's because our employees are only picking up 100 carts a year instead of 600 carts a year. We made it responsible for the businesses. Also, when we did this ordinance, Arnaldo talked or sent emails to all these businesses to get their comments and what they thought about this. And like I said, he did this through the Bay Area program. The businesses at the time, the comments, they weren't that negative. They said that they were okay with this. Our, like I said, our staff picked up carts. We had 200 shopping carts down under a wastewater treatment plant facility, had them all sorted out. We sorted them out for them and called the businesses, please come pick your carts up. And the major businesses said, just throw them away. We don't need them. It's cheaper for us to buy new ones than to send our staff or trucks over to pick up the carts that we've already collected. So this was a long process that our past economic developer, Arnaldo, that did was a major item and it was very time consuming for our city employees to do all this. So the businesses were notified. We did get their comments. We may, that was just our game plan at that time. We, like Ben said, we could change the shopping carts, not, you know, 10 or less, it could be 20 or less or, you know, like between 90 and 150, there's nothing there. We can, we can change the numbers around, but we did get responses from the business. We had very minimal complaints. They were all for it. And another suggestion is, it's only suggestions, and instead of them paying 40, $50,000 a year, these big businesses, major businesses, they have trucks, pickups on the major businesses. They could just have one of their employees drive around and call them up and pick these up. There, it's an employee, it's already a laborer for that business and they could save them $50, $60,000 a year for the wheel locks, this, everything else, just by purchasing a truck or they already have a truck in their inventory to pick these shopping carts up. We don't have to wait 48 hours or twice a week for a company to come out of Sacramento to pick it up. And it's just suggestion on that, but I just wanted council to know that we did work on this. It was a lot of hours, man hours that we put into this. The businesses were good with it and we're back at this right now. The small businesses were somewhat okay with it. I didn't hear too many complaints about that at that time. They were okay with it. So it was mainly us calling them up. The small businesses were great. They'd run out, we'd call them up, they'd run out at the end of the day or during the day and pick it up. We had no issues with them. It was the big businesses, the big box chains. They said, just keep them, throw them away. We don't want them. So I just wanted to let council know about that. And like I said, we could make some changes. It was a starting plan, 2017, where at 2020, we could make some changes and make it bigger and better today than what it was three years ago. And that's just my comments. Thank you.
All right, Ben, you're looking for tonight just to initiate an ordinance or you need specific modifications?
You know, from, from the input from council, in summary, what I'm taking is there's a definitely strong interest in initiating a modification. And so, so with that, I make the recommendation to initiate the ordinance. It looks like from working through Vice Mayor Boom Garden's comments and then also other input, really there was interest in receiving feedback from all of it, plus with the workshop on all of the items. And so if we make the recommendation as stated, to initiate the ordinances, including items A through F, then we'll come back, we'll, and so just to be clear on this, it's not going to come back to you in two weeks, as you know. There's going to be outreach to the businesses. We, we're going to look at what other cities do. We're going to maybe have a workshop set up to figure out what level that we need to get the participation and then come back with this summary. Work internally with the city attorney to make sure we could start putting that, the legal document together and then bring that back towards you. And so I would anticipate that realistically, the way things work and things going on, that you won't see me back reporting on it until maybe November.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
If the council can provide any initial guidance tonight, that would be helpful for staff as well. It helps narrow down where we want to go on it.
We mentioned A through F, A through G. What was it?
So one point of clarification that I'd like to make is that, you know, Ben's talking about starting, initiating, updating the ordinance. What I would actually recommend is we do the follow-up items related to contacting the businesses, getting the financial information, checking what other jurisdictions are doing before we start that ordinance update process. Bring that information back to council to see if it is council's desire to actually modify the existing ordinance. And then at that point in time, we can address those areas A through G to see, because there might be other things that come up as well. So for next steps, to go through those items that council specified tonight, not have staff proceed with starting to address the ordinance and then have that follow-up meeting before we could take that next step.
I think that's a great idea, Diana. It's very important to get feedback from the businesses, for sure. We might not even need to take it as far as, as this is, if they can come up with an association, if you will, rather than one business doing their own, each doing their own scenario for one cart at a time, if you have somebody going around getting any cart at all. It is hard to do enforcement unless you catch somebody in possession of it and then if they, they're going to deny that they're the one that took it, then you have to have, okay, possession of stolen property, but where's the report? And it creates a lot of time for these folks that it's just, it's quite frankly, not worth it. They have more things to do. But that's just an idea throwing out there, but the main thing, it starts with you, what you just said, I think, is getting that feedback and doing the groundwork first.
One other thing to note is that, you know, over the last few years, we've seen an increase in terms of the materials that are left in the cart.
Yeah.
And then also, just in terms of what employees are required to do to be able to, to basically get in full hazmat suit for the most part.
Yeah.
To be able to address that. And so that's another consideration that I think has changed tremendously over the last couple of years. And that's another item to bring up with these businesses in terms of, you know, having to address those items.
Good point. Chief, do you have something?
One quick point on this is that it does, when you're talking about the law enforcement aspect of this and making it a misdemeanor, it does require intent.
Right.
And second portion is, it's not just finding somebody in possession of it and that's not stolen property. It's got to have clear defining markings on it. So there's a lot of requirements in that and we'll work with the district attorney as well to make sure that they're understanding and the impact, but absolutely, we'll, we'll take a look in this as well.
I notice that's one reason why you have the, I remember food for less. They were on to that and they would scratch the food for less logo off the side for that exact reason. So there's ways around it. Making it, making it against the law doesn't mean we're going to have people held accountable.
Absolutely. And there is, there's a lot of issues, but we'll work through, we'll work through all that.
Thank you very much.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
And chief, thank you for your comments and we've talked about this a little bit before, but going back three years, there was kind of a mixed message because it came out of these chambers, it was okay to take a shopping cart home and by prior council members. And we're looking for, again, that voluntary compliance of, look, whether you realize it or not, you're taking away from a business owner here in town. And so we're seeking the voluntary compliance as much as we can. So, thank you.
So with that, I don't believe we need an action.
No, we don't.
Tonight, yeah.
Thank you, Ben. Clearly a lot of work put into that.
We'll see you.
The mayor, I do hate to interrupt you, but this item does need to go out to public comment before you move to the next item.
Forgive me, I thought I already did that. Do we have any public comment on this item? Go ahead. Anything on the computer?
Yes, there is one on the computer.
And?
I want you to read that while you're waiting for Mr. Burns.
Yes, please.
All right.
The side of the room is dark, so we're good there.
This is from Tony Curran. He wants to know who the biggest offenders are and could an ordinance change target the, these offenders. No pen intended, he said. It seems that the persons who take these carts should bear some of the responsibility.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. Sir.
Okay. My name is Thomas Burns. I would like clarification on what you call an abandoned cart, if it's full of somebody's junk or if it's totally empty.
It's really on the public. The public selects the bottom of the report and it's usually just a cart without an owner nearby.
Okay. So to me, I think that, that the whole thing should be abandoned, what you already have right now. And I agree with Mark and Dave that punishing the, the business owner for the thievery of their merchandises, I mean, that's un-American. And I just don't see why we couldn't have some police enforcement on it, you know? Why not? Give them a ticket. Take them to court. I mean, how long are we going to coddle the homeless around here? Since I've been in my business location, probably $2,000 worth of stuff has been stolen from me. So I'm sick of them. That's where I'm at. I'm sick of the homeless stealing stuff. And I think something needs to be done about it. And, and quit coddling the homeless. That's, that's the situation there. The, it's just, I can't even fathom that, that it's been put on the back of the business owner. And also, who pays for that? The general public, okay? So it's another welfare program. I would like to hear why, why the police can't enforce the stealing. I mean, everybody and their brother knows if it, if it's not yours, you, you know, you stole it. So that's the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? Oh. Yeah, just confirming nothing showed up on the computer.
Nothing additional.
All right.
Thank you.
So I believe.
Hi. I'm back again. On A, when you work that out, I think it's truly important to consider if it is something that is by the homeless. What do you do with the contents? What are the regulations? What you can do with it? Can you seize it, toss it? Is it personal property? There's a whole big piece in there and who's responsible for whatever you do with that? Besides whether it's hazardous or not, you know, people's clothes, things like that. I've seen people going around pushing a cart and pulling a cart. And so this really is a big issue and they are thieving. Does it have to be abandoned before we approach it? All of those are considerations that I think should go into the separate part of A. Thank you.
And thank you. All right. Going once, twice? All right. We're moving on to number 10. Future, any future agenda items? Any comments or requests for that? Any comments or requests for that? What? Nothing? Trish? All right. Councilman Ricardoza, what'd you do the last two weeks?
Oh, I've had a lot of fun. There's always excitement in our community. We're going to start off with meetings this session, a council meeting. I attended the homeless consortium meeting. Johnny was there. We had his second meeting, correct? Yeah, we had, got some activity going. He, more or less, the presentation that he gave us tonight is what we discussed or what I was able to listen to at that meeting. Councilman Shaw and myself, we attended the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority meeting. I attended the homeless ad hoc committee meeting with our Sutter County Supervisors and also Grace. We're moving along. It's a slow process, but we are moving forward. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get some more information and deal with that in our community. I attended the planning commission meeting last Wednesday night. We have great things in our community. The planning commission approved two subdivisions that will be coming to council here in the near future. And also, we're going to have chances of having the apartment complex on the corner of Louise and Stafford Way coming in our near future. This morning, I attended the Yuba City, the Yuba Sutter Pults Zoom meeting. That's by the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. Diana gave a presentation on what our city's doing here for tonight. And then on community and city events, Friday night, I was out with our Yuba City Police Department at our sobriety checkpoint. Being that we have the new bridge done now, there's quite a bit of traffic on Bridge Street. There was a lot of traffic considered from before, but it was a very successful evening. Of course, I always attend the certified farmers' markets on Saturday mornings at the Town Center and on Wednesday nights, when I have a chance, at our Sutter Community Museum. The vendors are wonderful. We get fresh produce, and that's from our local farms and in our area. Last Saturday, I attended the March of the Wool Mannequins at the Tea Garden House. That was hosted by the Yuba Sutter Arts, excuse me, Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture. I had, I put a bid in, and I got the winning bid for a unique Van Gogh Stere High Mannequin art piece. So I got a collection in my house that I threw it in, didn't think I was going to get it. I got it, so I have some artwork in my house. And that was a wonderful turnout. And that was also for the 100-year anniversary of women being able to vote. That was also part of that day. And that's it for me. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, a wool mannequin. It's just a half, that's just a half thing painted.
And as far as the two subdivisions?
Yes.
Did, was there any comment on the reason they're coming? Had anything to do with reduction of impact fees?
There was no, I'll let Ben answer that. I...
I'm just curious.
Yes.
I'm really hoping to hear that's true.
You know, absolutely. That was actually highlighted for both, for both subdivisions, the reduction in impact fees and the change in undergrounding policy. He said that the, from the engineer was really what was, hit the threshold to make it feasible.
Perfect. Good to hear that. Glad I asked.
And also, we have utilities in the area, so it's right there where they can hook up.
Perfect, perfect.
Also.
Thank you. Grace?
I have to follow up. Manny, your Councilman Cardozo over here, man, that's a hard one to follow up on, huh? Wool mannequin. Oh. Whoa, whoa, mannequin. There you go, wool mannequin. Well, I was at that same wool mannequin, and I bid for a lady as well, and she's in my closet.
Mine's on the wall.
Okay. No. It was a great event by the Yuba Sutter Arts Council, so it was fantastic. Last month was a theme, it seemed to me, mostly about women because it was the suffrage and the 19th Amendment, women's right to vote. So I was involved in a lot of women's issues last month. Imagine that. So with the Lega Cities, I'm part of the Women's Caucus, and there was a workshop on specifically on women equality and celebrating that and how women leaders are investing into the community. So that was a really interesting one, it was an afternoon training. There were women from all over Northern California, of councilwomen and mayors. So I really enjoyed that. Also participated in the previous, with the Yuba Sutter Arts, there was a Women in Conversations Leadership. So we, there were several women. There was a CEO of an ag business. There were, there was a medical doctor, the president of Yuba College, a councilwoman, Mackenzie, superintendent of schools. So we had a women's and leadership conversation, which went really well, and it was produced through the Yuba Sutter Arts Council as well. From that, we have continued now to meet, and we're calling it a Women Leadership, Women Leaders Network. And part of that is understanding, you know, the differences of executive leaders and elected leaders and women and the role of how our jobs impact maybe women differently. And the topic that we had was on the balance of having a family and teaching your kids at home right now. Yeah, that's a big, big topic, big issue. So we're going to plan on meeting every month, which is exciting because that's going to be something that will help us learn as women leaders in this community. The other thing that was, I've always been part of is the homeless ad hoc committee that we met with Manny in Sutter County. We reviewed briefly a plan that we've been talking about. I think we should have, hopefully, some really stronger details here in the next meeting. Was there a follow-up meeting date on that, Diana? There's no follow-up meeting date on that. We met three weeks prior to that meeting because, you know, we wanted to deal with some of these homeless issues and find, you know, tent opportunities, clean up areas, move things around. And we're just waiting for that plan through, to work through Sutter County. And the last thing that was extremely fun, and I have to thank Brad and Kelsey for organizing last minute. There was an idea that I meet monthly, or excuse me, weekly, in another group, the Latino Outreach, with helping with COVID-19 with Dr. Lou and a team of by-county community, actually, it's tri-county, it's Calusa, Yuba, Sutter, and Buke County. We meet once a week normally. And then the question came up is how do we, how do we engage young people, understanding their role in this COVID-19 and helping open up our schools? So it's one of those two things. And so talked to Brad and talked to Diana, talked with Brad and Kelsey and our youth commissioners, met. We met with Dr. Lou and her team, and they are invited in a process of developing a public outreach campaign. So our youth commissioners were really excited about that. And hopefully, you'll be seeing some of them on some Snapchat or TikTok or Instagram or Facebook or something to that effect. We're supposed to regroup in 30 days to see what that outcome may look like. So our young people are also engaged in helping beat to COVID-19. So they're making a strong commitment to this, and I'm excited about that it happens to be our youth commissioners who are part of that solution. Any questions, gentlemen? Comments, feedback? Thank you, thank you.
Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, since our last council meeting, I've had the transit meeting for one. Couple of quick things from that. Number one, ridership, of course, is still down, as fully expected. They have reinstated fares and stuff on that because there was a period of time that they were not charging the fares, trying to, you know, provide a service and whatnot. But the bigger item agenda that is looming out there with transit is, I believe, Mr. Cardozo, that Keith told us, in the next couple of months, we will start getting some feasibility reports back, I believe, for site selections. Because Yuba Sutter Transit is going to have to build a new site somewhere in the next several years to be able to facilitate the fleet of electric buses that they're going to need. Plus, there's this little project with the highway that's going to come down and take probably a lot of their parking lot and facility right there in front of Marysville High School. So we're waiting to see where that falls. We're waiting to see if there's sites inside of the city limits of Yuba City. At this point, we don't have that information, but I'm hopeful that we're in that mix. Besides that, we're working on ad hoc committees, still moving things forward with what we're doing as a council to conduct the business of the city. So with that, I do want to add one more thing, and that is, I just want to thank our public for being here tonight. It's nice having you guys back in the chambers, and I appreciate your feedback, appreciate you being patient with us over the past several months. This thing turned out not to be a sprint, but a marathon. And we're all in it together, but I'm glad you guys are here tonight and thanks for your feedback. And with that, the only other thing that happened is I got one year older, as we all know, last council meeting. So I appreciate my fellow council members and the staff. Ms. Sanchez, thank you for the treats at the last council meeting and wishing me a happy birthday and bringing in the cupcakes and stuff. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor?
My turn. I too am pleased to see the public here with us again. It's always nice to see the staff in these chambers, but it's doubly nice when we have the public and we get to hear from them. We are here to serve. We are here to represent. So I'm hopeful that as the days go by and the weeks or whatever, that we can get more, more public in the chambers here with us. Want to thank Mr. Burke for coming by today. Nice to meet you, and like I said earlier, I'll put a name with a face. The meetings that I attended, the mayor asked that I, as his alternate, attend SACOG, which is Sacramento Area Council of Governments. It was the longest, most spirited political meeting that I've had, the misfortune of listening to. Actually, the big issue was funding. And you can imagine, you know, if you have representatives from the counties and the cities, from Placer and Sacramento and Yolo and Sutter and Yuba, there are a lot of different interests. And there, you know, SACOG does have a pot of money that they can, that they facilitate moving around to different agencies. So the issue was, how does that, how do those funds get dispersed? And of course, everybody had their own idea about how that should be. And at the end of a three-and-a-half-hour meeting, they didn't pass a damn thing. So they have to come back and do it again, and no, you get it this time, sir.
You beat me to it.
One thing that did occur, and this was a topic that, that I believe you and I were on ad hoc committee for, which was the flavored tobacco. And so that, a state law was passed effective January 1, where there's restrictions on the sale of flavored tobacco. So we'll have to revisit and see where we need to go, if we need to go on any of that. So, but that was something that happened over the last few days. With Council, Councilman Shaw, he mentioned it, the city manager ad hoc committee, we're moving ahead with that. We've got some meetings scheduled, and that process moves forward as we move ahead. Lafco, the city has representation on Lafco, and I am the designated person. And Councilwoman Esmondola is the alternate. I'm going to have to ask her to attend this next meeting. I've got another conflict, but it's my understanding that municipal services review is coming up, and I see Mr. Moody hopping to the, to the mic again, which is good. Okay. There's a slight possibility I might attend. I have a meeting that I can't get out of, but...
I'll follow up. My understanding right now, it's a workshop.
And the final, final thing I want is, I know, I think there may be a little issue, but we got the Hometown Hero banners up this past week. And if you haven't seen those, what a nice job. I think George Barlow was the coordinator of that. They had to come down for a bit, but they're going back up, I think. So anyway, what a great tribute to those who've served our country. And it's just one of those projects you look at and you go, yeah, it's a good deal. But with that, I'd turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, poor George. I can only imagine, because he put a lot of work into that. I think we're coming up with the end of this month, or the latter half of this month, as they're going back up.
Yeah, he's still working with the vendor, but that's his goal.
Okay, very good. Just real quick, I too appreciate the public coming. And I know we have limited seating, but it's always good to see familiar faces and the input, which is a great, a step in the right direction. Speaking of virtual meetings, I did attend a virtual back-to-school night. So I want to shout out to our, our school teachers out there and the hard work they're doing trying to adapt to all this. It's, it's incredible. I couldn't do that job even in person. And then I, you know, I see my young one here trying to attend school, and I catch him on the tablet or whatever, playing games, and then she has 20 of them trying to corral all that and still trying to be effective teacher. And it's rough. And so I appreciate all the work our school teachers do, that's for sure. Back to Yuba Sutter Arts. I attended a board meeting. They had a lot of projects. I have to give my hats off to them, Dave and Abby over there. I do it a lot, but they deserve it a lot. They do, I do a great job, especially adapting to COVID and the restrictions and the thing that they, the ideas they come up with are outstanding. And so hats off to them. I was out of town for a few days, so I didn't go to the Wool Mannequin event at Tea Garden, but I understand it was a big success. They actually sold, well, I have down here that they sold them, but apparently you bought, both of you bought one. All right, well, that's good. Part of SACOG, Mark, thank you again, Vice Mayor, for attending on my behalf. I did not plan my, my few days out of town around that, but it's, it looks like I'm going to get to enjoy the benefit of the debate again. But it's a very important thing. It's a two-year funding round in how we disperse the money, millions of dollars. One of the reasons why it's such a, I don't know, if I say contentious issue is because our area is so diverse. You have a diverse area, you're going to have diverse objectives and diverse priorities, and you try to come together in one. When you're talking millions of dollars, it becomes pretty interesting. I did attend today the Commercial Corridor Task Force. I'm in a working group that's a sub-working group of SACOG. And I brought this up before, but I just really appreciate this graphic that they prepared, SACOG staff prepared, entitled the Barriers to Infill and Corridor Revitalization. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but they have five different categories here that they've identified that I think would help steer our conversations and our efforts here locally. When you can have these line items, you can address, perhaps case by case, but infrastructure would be, like we've talked about before, water and sewer upgrade needs, sidewalks, bike lanes, safety issues, ADA retrofits. Those challenges can be a barrier that we can overcome for corridor revitalization. Regulatory processes, we've already talked about CEQA before. We've talked about how we've already reduced our impact fees by roughly 50%. Citywide, a list goes on in there. Costs and funding, societal issues that might be barriers. The most obvious example of that is the NIMBY syndrome. You might want to have a development come in, but you got the NIMBY problem. And then you go, you move it, and you got another NIMBY problem. And so that's something we can address, or at least talk about. And of course, the market. In that, we get into rent control, high-density, mixed-use issues, housing costs, absentee landlords, and we're right into our nuisance ordinances, too. So it's a very interesting, it's all... So it's a very interesting, it's all online at SECOG website, but I tell you, it's, um, it helps me a lot. I've referred to it a lot when we decide to prioritize our actions and what we're going to be doing to, um, get some development in our city and moving forward. And that is pretty much it with the, in addition to, of course, the coveted, the lovely campaign season we're, we're all a part of right now for another two more months. So, again, thank you all for coming. Thank you all, all the staff for being here. Johnny, you, you stuck through the entire meeting. I'm impressed. I'm impressed. Okay, you guys all be safe out there and we stand adjourned. Thank you. Uh, one thing I, I noticed here, I, I just looked on this thing. This thing was donated to the city by Mayor Tom Pfeffer in, on September 8th, 1981. So 39, 39 years this thing's been sitting up here, being used. So that's pretty, pretty interesting, a week from now, anyway. Thank you, have a good night.